All right, welcome everybody to the meeting here. This is a regular, we're also be counseling. And the world of the forums are in fact, we made side. With that, I'm gonna call meeting to order. Please stand to the pledge of. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas once they have God, one individual. We have a forum, the meeting of all council members present, approved council meeting.
Thank you, Mayor. The notice that this meeting was posted by two P M on September thirty.
Perfect. Do we have any public comments? Moving on to public hearings, I'll invite you to prepare to speak on one of the items under public hearings. You'll have three minutes. If you come up, say you need more, the council can't respond to you during the public. All right, City Secretary, public hearings are starting at five thirty-one. First, public hearing to attain citizen views, comments regarding the second final reading of ordinance twenty-four dash oh nine dash oh five. And ordinance approving the fiscal year twenty-four five votes, tax rate of point four three nine two oh five for one hundred dollars. It says valuation this fiscal year October one, twenty twenty-four through September thirty of twenty twenty-five, for use and support the fiscal government of the city of Alpine, Texas. Is there anyone here to speak on this? Seeing none, public hearing B, regarding the first file reading ordinance twenty twenty-four dash oh nine dash six and ordinance in the name of the city of Alpine, fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget. Providing repealing severability clauses in Texas Open Meetings Act clause and providing effective date. Is there anybody here to speak on this? Seeing none, closing public hearings at five thirty-two. Okay, moving on to public presentations, there are no recommendations to presentations. We do have a proclamation this evening, and I wanted to invite Judy Perry to come on up. Judy is with the Daughters of the American Revolution. And you have a few words you'd like to say.
Good afternoon, I'm Judy Perry. On behalf of the Cosano Chapter, Daughters of the American Revolution. We thank you for commemorating Constitution Week. The National Society, D A R, is a nonprofit, nonpolitical women's service organization. We support historic preservation, education, and patriotism. Locally, the Cosano Chapter has presented the D A R Good Citizens Award to high school seniors since nineteen ninety-two. We give seven awards, one for each school in the tri-county area. Our state society created and continues to support the D A R Centennial Scholarship and Saw Losses. Those are just two examples of D A service in this very D A R service. Constitution Week always begins today, September seventeenth. That day in seventeen eighty-seven was when the Constitution of the United States of America was signed. In nineteen fifty-six, at the request of D A R, the U S Congress officially enacted Constitution Week. By promoting awareness of the Constitution, D A R helps to keep alive the memory of the patriotic men and women of the American Revolution who secured our nation's liberty. So, thank you, Mayor Eves, and City Council members for your support of Constitution.
Judy, let me have a point with the five. Whereas September seventeenth, twenty twenty-four marks the two hundred thirty-seventh anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas this fitting improper to afford official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary, and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion. And whereas public law nine one five guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, designating September seventeenth through twenty-third as Constitution. Now therefore, I, Catherine Eves, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of Alpine and the state of Texas, do hereby proclaim the week of September seventeenth through the twenty-third as Constitution Week. And ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals of the frameworks of the Constitution had in seventeen eighty-seven by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through guardian of our liberties, remembering that lost rights may never be regained. The witness whereof I have herein to set my hand this seventeenth day of September in the year twenty twenty-four. Thank you. Okay, moving on to community interest items, City Secretary, one minute on the clock for each person to speak on behalf of the community interest items. First, mayor announcements, I have done. Moving on to City Mayor's jury.
Uh, just a few items, thank you, Mayor. Uh, the Museum of the Big Ben is going to be screening the Amazon Prime Series of Art in America, which features residents of Alpine and Odessa. So this is a, a big thing for us. It will be Saturday, September twentieth at six thirty P M at the Museum of the Big Ben, and it is free for anyone who would like to attend. It's good to see some of our locals in action. Uh, just a reminder, the police department is having a blood drive September twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth, uh, open to the public. So if you'd like to donate blood, um, please do so. Uh, I did send out notice and we have provided notice to the public as well that City Hall will be closed on Monday, September thirtieth. It is the end of our fiscal year. We are obligated to end and close and open the books fairly fast. So it's the opportunity for the staff to get that taken care of. Um, but that doesn't mean you can't make your utility payments. Um, they can be made online or you can drop it off at the drop box that's located outside City Hall. Um, and also National Night Out is going to be Tuesday, October first. Um, I am trying to keep the agenda for the first fairly limited so that we can get everyone out there. Um, it will be at the newly developed Pablo Nuevo Park. So we're really excited to show off the park. Um, and of course, uh, give thanks to our police department, fire department, EMS, and everyone else that participates for National Night.
Okay, one minute on the clock, City Secretary, three thousand, two thousand and thirty.
So one of us saw losses back in session and warm it up. And next week.
That's the first of the. The sixteen. That's. That's from our tables. I was invited this morning to the hall, to, uh, celebrations that both boys and girls here because of, uh, exploring. It was, uh, uh, the, the peanut center. The presentation was made by the Council of Superior, and I think it was, it was video. And he explained all the services that the council provide. It was very. And it was a professional presentation of sorbonne students and, uh, high school students. It was about equal, uh, presentation. And it was a combination of students, so it was very, uh, fun, varsity event.
Uh, reminder, everybody, uh, registered to vote, check your voter status, listed because October seventh. Also, uh, regarding the white work highway construction, uh, we had a very loud construction work. Uh, they're planning to do work from nine P M until seven in the morning. So lots of constituents in, uh, Ward One were not very happy about that. I've reached out to text that it is a contractor. We're trying to figure out, we want to balance, of course, school traffic and also not disturbing uh, kids learning during the day. So we're looking at trying to do that to like three or four o'clock to start. Hopefully stop at by ten eleven midnight. I think that's more reasonable. Trying to get something that is good for the people and of course, good for the contractors as well. There are also possibly options to do boys, uh, spines, we're not sure yet. As a contractor, of course, even a public utility, public works for governing authority. And so you might have to do a little bit of, uh, I, I like carrots better than sticks, but of course, don't want to keep our residents up all night. So just more info to kind of, if you are having issues sleeping at night, feel free to reach out to me. I'm happy to chat with you.
All right, moving to changes to posted agenda. Are there any items to be continued for the draw? Okay, so that would actually be.
Oh, okay.
All right, any items to be continued with the draw? All right, moving on, any items to be removed, consent? Any items be removed, consent agenda for separate discussion, since item B.
We're gonna buy the.
All right, any action items to be added to the consent agenda? Okay, moving on, any time sensitive items? Seeing none, moving on. Moving on to the consent agenda, City Secretary, we moved items B and D for separate discussion.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight's consent agenda contains two items now at the approval of September thirty, twenty-four, regular events and approved on this one. Once a billing summary for the fourth is law firm.
I need a motion. I need a second. Okay, vote. City Secretary, the items A and C, we're considering all possible first. All right, moving on, we're gonna do these order, moving on to sent agenda item the Councilmember has.
So the special on that one is just an explicit sale on the fourth board, you still have full positions, part would be a great thing, but I would really love to have that on there. And the application to tell that to your voters. So that is the qualification to require five of the registered voters in the city, all seven would be a vote. So I think we had, Bill was looking to get on page of the lower. So on that one, I would love to have him on there, but if you have to build our own rules as well.
Consent agenda item D.
Sure, yeah, so, uh, you know, this is a grant, a supplement, hey, I really respect Chief, we had, uh, we had a lot of questions about this. Uh, you know, this comes out with officer pay. Um, at the same time, I just, uh, you know, can't in good conscience vote for something uh, that's supplementing income to the city, but kind of what I think in it, it's sometimes a racist, uh, operation of the star way. There's been seventy-four people that have died, uh, over a dozen Texas national quarters to guard setting bystanders that were citizens in this eleven million dollars, extra million dollars. So, uh, just have a moral. I just said.
Okay, so I need a, a motion to deal with item C. Who's motion, council member has? Okay.
That, it has to be another. And somebody can pick the shit to approve. About time. We make the motion.
I need a second. And item B, as that, this bill. Okay, moving on to item D, I need a motion for item D. I need a second.
Also.
Okay, let's vote. All right, all right, City Secretary, item D, the consent agenda was approved with council member Martinez, Nance, Escobedo, and Stevens voting for it. Councilmember Stone voting against it. Moving on to reports and presentations, person presentations, one hundred and fifty seconds on the clock. The first report belongs to you, City Secretary.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, so we do have August twenty twenty-four, uh, three reports being legislative services. City Council activities for any mission that activity of public information and department. You know, we did start doing four months, we gave a, um, that was twelve by the time our patient uh, in August, we did approve for the council to rather the ordinances for the city to a total of fourteen ordinances at one fifty-fourth of just for the year. And the council also presided resolution bringing the city to a total of thirty-seven approved out of thirty-nine. So additionally, uh, we have five public hearings. We, uh, continue to go letter to property owners, uh, notifying them those changes. Uh, we're totaling six hundred twenty-eight letters at this fiscal year. Uh, public information requests, we have had more this year than the last six years. So we are, uh, pretty much, we're there. Last month, planning and zoning commission, Parks Recreation Board did need the other boards to not. Uh, and the council made two board of office. There are four victims, that's why we're speaking here. Additionally, regarding election, we continue to support it with Worcester County in preparation of the upcoming November election. The ballots have been proven, printed, and counted to ensure that all of our portions of the ballot, uh, ballots are accounted for. And in good order, Alex Tackett and myself personally counted each ballot and the capacity upcoming election. Uh, and additionally, the election here in Worcester County is safe with consideration this evening. And lastly, our office has compiled a listing of ordinances instead of things. Megan and I are, are scheduled, scheduled to plan for work on the goal objective. We plan on launching, I think, section to that report. Uh, that should be next one. If you have any questions, feedback.
You're doing awesome, uh, awesome job.
Thank you.
Now, we mentioned that there, um, to go with the position, place, modify, people, park recreation. We'd love to accept that one, hopefully find registered voter, push county. And, um, part four is, we've had six times this year, but we're only running because we could have.
That's the rest of the data. All right, moving on to discussion item, number, or letter V, City Manager.
This is an update from the Alpine Volunteer Fire Department, uh, from Chief James Edgerton. He is here tonight.
Thank you, Chief Edgerton. You'll have six minutes on the clock.
Well, I've covered six minutes, but I'll see if I can move. We've got a lot of changes in the last few months, so, so we'll start off with the easy part, our calls. We've had eight sudden calls this year. Six instructor fires, twenty-three wildfires, three vehicle buyers, eight dumpster buyers, thirty-eight litesses, one search rescue, and he has managed. That's all, uh, people did those. Sorry, for May twenty-sixth. Yeah, success. I, I didn't count that as a success. Sometime next week is the Alpine Works Service Door Year, three D R finances, people want information on that. Uh, I did highlight something of mine, it's training. That's something that we did in parts since I've taken over as fire chief, strength, training, training, training. With that, we now have five certified firefighter volunteers, which are also hasn't been certified as well. We have six wildland certified people that go ahead and execute. Lay out the land, have a property, handle the situation so that's real important. If, got one example, T F S, Texas Forestry Service, but wanting to that, we're mitigating, we're doing that as volunteer fire. We have four class eight drivers, driver trains to run. Uh, we have twenty-eight firefighters that we're training up for firefighter one to give them the base training firefighter. We're doing that in-house because we have two instructors as well, fire instructors that, that's recent, that's an instructor. We also have five firefighters going to separate class for firefighter one and two down to their level. We have one fire inspector, it was just recently. Also a wildland investigator, I took that class to make sure that we had influx of brush fires, everybody remembers. Probably about twenty, twenty-five brush fires. Yeah, but our horses. Good stuff, so. All of our training, everything that we're doing, N F P A standards, N F P A is National Fire Protection Agency. They're taking, it's their requirements, also needs requirements, S F F M A, State Firefighter Fire March Association. Make sure the Republican lines, guidelines, everything that we do, the one got into here. For the city, we put together a small, small cert team, we have six members for the cert. Cover team. We have two instructors, one bachelor trainer that can train. Trainer to train to trainer to train. So we have everything we need, so we're, we're putting in house, give ourselves more trainers, more certain people. So we have for other. This is, as you phrase, uh, the ball next. We are currently going through the inspection and certification process of everything, firehouse. We're going through all of our S C Ks, our self-esteem breathing apparatuses, making sure they're all safe, up to date. We have currently fourteen bottles that are currently up to date. So we're exposing those. We're firing about thirty more bottles that we are purchasing from a grant called Open Hands. They were funded by the Texas Forest Service. Want to make sure that our firefighters are going in. Proper gear, up to date gear. And stuff that protected, make sure. We're hoping to make this the year of maintenance, not repairs, because repairs, uh, kills. So we have repaired all of our vehicles, all of our vehicles are now up and running. Currently have three brush trucks, we're gonna add two. Yeah, they're tankered, we have two engines, we have one engine that's still out, because the tank is big, it's really good work on this scrap. And one of those engines might be down for repairs because it's damaged during the twenty-sixth fire. So insurance is covering that, we'll get that prepared. And lastly, on October twenty-ninth, we're all like to be on. The sand table exercise. We were awarded the grant for the, for the, but it's going to take place here, Alpine. It's gonna be a tabletop, so we're not actually the first trains in or. What we're gonna do is we're gonna sit down and. What we're planning for. Uh, big disaster this year is bus that's hit by a train coming from Big Ben, that's a park, and the train, as it turns. So those, probably some kids in there really. That should be coming down October twenty-ninth, it's gonna be all day event. For, provide lunch for everyone. Sit down, five. Any questions?
Thank you all.
There are a couple of shout-outs, of course, a really new toy hearing about. All the equipment, uh, said. Maintenance, whether the repairs, up here, any of that type of stuff, of course, uh, fire department is something we need to. To have in an emergency, where there's services you don't wanna pay for, you absolutely have to have it, like, we, we gotta have a good one, right? Um, and it's also good to hear, uh. A combination of using resources like the Texas Forest Service and I'm sure like the Diablo as well, I, I don't know if it's. One thing, uh. I wanted to bring up and, and don't let me not ask if there's anything you need as well, and I heard training, but look through the expand on that. I just looked up National Fire Protection Association, I guess that's the top standard. They say hydrants be, be flushed and inspected annually, and I know we haven't done that in years, is there any plans?
Yes, so I would need to work with these, to learn. Uh, and I can go out and do some, we have what I'd rather have prepared as well, that way they. Be on site, never, you test it. If my chance doesn't. Chad, if you, so once we've Chad, we'll back mine on calls. And so we, I think I've got three tags, oh, two or three, I doubt they're. Uh, according to the chief. Uh, so I'll, I'll look into it.
Very good to hear that.
So far, all hydrants, especially on the, twice on the fire. No issue. We have pressure.
We heard that's sounding clear, that's really, really good. Just speaking, diving one more step into that, have the ones that we did use on nature, they have those been flushed through after that use?
Most hydrants in town have this one.
Very good, um, well, my question that I said I didn't wanna skip anything else that you.
Every time I, I feel like an archivist, every time I dig. Sure, so, uh, that's, that's just part of, my, my next big thing is communication. We have communications, but we don't. So it's sometimes feels like bombing through a string and can't. We're, we're the good.
I, I know a couple volunteers myself, Korean people.
And you're in the budget, no worries. I have a question, how far the hybrid need to be like down? So the distance between.
Looking at our hydro map. And those aren't, it's not, some of them are three kinds.
My question is because. I'm sorry that I have to ask, uh, people know I've got it. Street, uh, when the fire change. They have to go like to get water, it would be something different than that by far put down?
Uh, we actually just went right out and cornered the fire. And it's the, the market of the. Uh, it was right off that Hollywood.
Sixty, sixty.
Fifty-four, five inches. It's through about this, people before around four. The other closest one was actually two blocks of road. Down by Marsha. We didn't wanna go over the road, so.
It was something different, they excluded the dance of the fire or?
I arrive, please. If I arrive this. There. We're there. Let's blast. Make sure the rest is fine. So make sure that both sides. Uh, stay at the hospital outside. Pass that, anything would've jumped over there, probably. Next block. Other than that, my guidance, great, are. It's very bad, hundred fifteen, there are firefighters there. Four days, T F S.
Thanks. It is. I was gonna kinda ask, when we go to team now, if that is a thing, where that gets mapped out on G I S?
We're also working. Dog, and she's helping us to. Not only here, but all of. She is awesome. Well, we're returning, buddy. Yeah, thirty-three. The bylaws or S O P one, to state, we used to say that. Well, change that. Safety. Same question, let's follow up. Follow up is fifteen, so we've got most of our. Yes. So we have, we have fourteen bottles that are good, we have thirty bottles that have ten-year but on them. And got money into budget, but. Yeah, budget wise. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Alright, moving on to discussion I see. Included in the package is the August revenue and expense report, uh. We are coming towards the end of the mid-year, a few things to note is we did notice that our tax floors are not anticipated, uh. Looking at the reports that I repeat, font, they'll tax. Um, it looks like we have less people being in. Our closing or their operating. Um, we are on point, our property tax collection. For our water and wastewater, uh, overall, the revenue does look good, I, I want to mention that when we look at the numbers. And it looks like, well, you know, we're only at four million out of the six million, twenty-two percent of what we budgeted was the A R V A fund specifically for the. So if you remove the, the roughly one twenty. We're actually on target for what we budgeted, that didn't involve reserves or our fund balance. And. The airport is on track, the R P A, a wrap reimbursement for roughly fifty-six thousand dollars. And this year they did have the ninety-ten split, we only. They'll cover ninety percent of our maintenance, it's the cover the temperature, so it was like. Tourism, once again, if you look at the numbers, it looks like we're not at where we need to be, but we're really far because a good portion of that was budgeted. Fund balance or there's the visitor center, we're not utilizing that. So when you look at what we budget for specifically, since the grants, the operations, we are within line. Chris isn't gonna have to make these last-minute pushes to spend money on advertising, which is nice, uh. I do indicate that it's a little lower than anticipated because it's within budget, every year we always exceed the budget, this year we don't plan on it. Um, the gas department, it is as anticipated floors and what we originally budgeted, we are happy for weather, which does impact our gas. Interest in thinking is in line with the budgeted amounts. When you look at the expenses, both of our expenses typically come out July, August, September for the street department. At the end of August, we did pay for the hot pots, uh, roughly ninety thousand dollars of large expense. And of course, we have all of our silicon going on. Uh, the big expense coming out of water, wastewater this year has been engineering, so you'll see that that is over budget, uh, significantly. The engineers have assisted us with not only all of our water concern, improvements to the wastewater treatment plant, but they've also been guiding us of. Clients, specifically the letting copper mandated inventory that did do off over sixteen. Um, airport, the big expense as always, dirt fuel. Um, but the tourism, I just wanted to point out some of the big expenses that you see. Within that department are the promotion, advertising for the month of August. Um, this is when we reimburse a lot of the summer events, Vito Big Ben, Travis of Texas, Vator Big Ben, Bluegrass Festival, Cowboys, I Heart. Um, for the historic, but the items, the Alpine Ice, coconut renovation. And you don't usually see the story convinced until the summer because that's what we have our. Um, you look at the gas, um, the gas department continues, um, with their distribution payments, they are definitely a proactive department of all the. And of course, the interest in thinking in August, we made our final payment, uh, for the year. Uh, so that was completed and we're up to date with all of their debt. Overall, the actual revenue for the general fund is five million, four hundred thirty thousand, hundred and ten dollars. With expenses at four million, three hundred and seventy thousand, eight hundred and fourteen dollars. For our water, wastewater, sanitation, the actual expenses at the end of August were four million, six hundred forty-one dollars and four cents. With the expenditure at four million, one hundred eighty-eight thousand, four hundred and six. Airport is at seven hundred and thirty-two thousand, two hundred and ninety dollars, and actual at seven, seven hundred and thirty-seven thousand, three hundred and eighty-two. Hotel occupancy tax, six hundred and thirty thousand, three hundred and fifty-three revenue. Expenditure at six hundred and sixty-eight thousand, eight hundred and four. The gas utility fund has brought in one million, nine hundred and twenty-three thousand, two hundred and eleven dollars. And expended one million, six hundred and fifty-five thousand, seven hundred and eighty-two. Our interest in thinking has brought in a hundred and fifty-nine thousand, eight hundred and sixty-one dollars and expended. One hundred and forty-seven thousand. That's my rest of it.
And we're in under, right now, under about one, two, four billion dollars.
I separate everything you don't.
Yeah, sixteen, one, eight million, and one, one, what do you spend this gonna be doing?
Um, to be honest, um, I printed out the report today, we'll probably close it up.
That's good.
Yeah, we're, we're encouraging all of these open fields. Close out and then, um, the staff has been notified that the last day for procurement, virtually. They have a, a week, yeah, and it closes up, so that we have each process here. That's what we have. In regards to our revenue? Um, so all of the fees. Revenue is pretty solid. And property tax is gonna be heavy between December and February. So that's when they really bring in the largest amount of property tax. Um, gas and water kind of alternate, gas is set in the winter, water is set in the summer. The hot one is an eyeball, uh, we do receive money every month, but it. I can't say, oh, we're gonna get about a hundred thousand every month. Um, some months we may get eight thousand, some months we may get a hundred fifty thousand. Of course, the, the, that are collecting for the various. Department, the pool obviously operates during summer, so we'll keep that rushing. The expenses happen all year. They're very. Now, so.
Just a couple of items, I think, I definitely understand here, I do appreciate maybe all your initial knowledge. Financial background. Uh, on the water, wastewater utility, I'm noting that it's about sixty-two, we'll round up to sixty-three percent of budget. Uh, is that affected by the, the.
Yes, twenty-two percent of their revenue expenses is high. So it's in the curve right now, so you're not seeing any expense more than.
Okay. I really, then, you know, we're, it looks like we're getting closer. I'm guessing, you think that general one percent number is not gonna be close to eighty by then?
Oh, that's. So we have the Phil Cody, so that's the street department, bigger projects, and those are averaging about. Twelve, twenty grand every time they drop material.
Three square feet of asphalt, which is that. Oh, thank you.
Alright, moving on to information or discussion items, I say go on to city manager.
Um, at the last city, or, discussed the legal figures and guidelines for issuing utilities. For the city of Alpine, at the last city council meeting, um, it was on the agenda to approve the sale of a property. Councils did deny that sale of property, and there was not any conspiracy on their behalf. Um, as part of that, I believe the real estate agent did reach out and was upset, and reached out to several of you as well regarding the, the just. Side of it, wanting to know how we could resolve this. I do know that councillor Stevens, um, has spoken with several of the directors that are here tonight to provide insights in regards to the utilities, water, gas. And our building official was also present at that meeting. Um, I was not at that meeting, so I will let them provide all of the update in the direction. And I did reach out to our legal team, and Alexander is aware that this item was on the agenda, so that they could provide kind of the next step. So I'll let councillor Stevens take over, and then if you wanna speak to Randy and they're, they know the next thing.
So, uh, thanks for everyone who was out there, it was an interesting discussion, the fact is. The original request was asked, being for ten feet, they go to city property. The house literally sits on about a foot of city properties, and the eave comes out a little bit more, I know. There's gonna be smashing off there, that would be, the recommendation that came out of the dialogue was. Two things, one. Uh, come back in the future with a recommendation to allow the property owner to take on a fourth plus enough to cover the eaves. Which may be two and a half feet, surveying the one. Uh, that protects the city's easement area, which is good, which is the sewer line. The gas line is not the gas main, it is only the service line going to the house. Uh, so, but basically, so to say, they recommend, that's about two feet. That the property owner would buy, the other element would be a variance to the setback requirements against the road. That house violates the setback requirements, I don't care how you cut it, so that's gonna need to be in there chronically for the setback, and I think Robert was at five feet. Uh, to be able to go on that, but I think that's, uh, that, that was the discussion we had, and then you'll come back, I think. From a gas perspective, and Randy's here, from a water standpoint. Johnny was out there, from a building inspector standpoint, uh, yeah, Robert's out there, Jess was out there. Uh, uh, and that's in fact, the recommendation is written, uh, where they're written to Geo, even in the agenda when you actually. Be on, uh. Author first meeting and the second meeting, uh, kind of a case where it was all kind of issued. Further down the road on Brown, part of the discussion we got into is, there's gotta be a whole poster board further down on Brown. Guess that would be on the, uh, east side, uh, since they're taking property. But that's, the team's gotta go off of one of those seven, that was the unique problem. Is anything?
So on the setback variance, would that be going to fine units only? And would they be reapplying and resurbing the property much?
They would resurvey the property, and setback variance, I think it just needs to be part of the ordinance or the resolution that allows that to be permanent. Uh, and whatever our processes to take it forward. Do that, I think. Building inspection, it's, uh, we have no choice, it's already violent and setback. How we do it from a city process standpoint, I don't know, but it's violating it right now.
I do acknowledge that back to you, you're more fortunate than me, you have to set that.
Any comment from the back bench who was there? Or bench, the back bench?
Any of our directors, you have any comments?
No, no ma'am.
So Megan, thank you for putting this meeting together, and Rick, thank you for attending.
It's good to meet up with you, it's, it's a tough issue, and part of my takeaway was. A lovely conference, you know, you got it and. We have these all over the city, uh, and so it's an issue that we gotta work, and some of these are worked individually. I will tell you, the property owner. Uh, if you go to the south of the property, the property in the south is probably ten feet on their property. So when you look at the property stakes, that house is on the wrong spot.
Once again, and thank the directors for being there, and Megan for putting that together, and Rick for attending. Any other discussion, uh, regarding what Rick?
Question for, and I know Rick, I kind of gave you what you're feeling, I heard you say, here's what I want, it's big policy changes. Of course, we're not gonna knock this house down, so we gotta do a bit here and there. Is that a good precedent?
I don't know that there needs to be big change, but it's, I do know, and. Thankful for our folks, like. You'd be understanding where we each look for. Stays more blessed, and I think fortunate, the on the sewer line was not underneath the house. Otherwise, by easement, there was an issue with sewer line. Forget how to dig out and around.
I hope I'm not sitting here with that air come.
It's a tough issue, so, this is the gas line, it's a service line, the main gas line was not on Brown, it's.
Uh, I think you kinda answered my question, but thank goodness we have good city employees right now, was this just. Back whenever this house was made, sixty-seventies, whatever the heck it was, no one just monitored it correctly, so.
I think if we look at the picture of the house, it says kind of had all garage.
It's in that.
Yeah, not really where the garage was, um, and at the time, maybe the permitting wasn't as strict as it is now, uh. Um, it's unfortunate, we aren't gonna fall into those, just, you know, we have had that happen, someone filled us with a unit over a need water line. Move it because we were breaking the foundation.
I, I've heard, and this is my last question, and I don't know if it's solid tonight, but. Basically, what we're going on this, definitely by case-by-case basis, you had, you know, four or five directors out there, a city staff. That fee doesn't cover the cost that we did that. So if we had a hundred houses, you know, next week that needed to do this, or something, that could be a big cost for the city, that's just something that.
So after the seller reapplies and the city grants to purchase of it, they pay for it, they have to follow the. Then they call with their same name title, it would show that they own that property, then you would have the reason tied to it. So that if they did do anything in the future, we're protected. Uh, and this is where the conversation was, you guys didn't deny, like, you denied the sale because of our utility. So easements are allowable, but it's keeping track of the easements, since like this one will be an odd unit, because it's not for a whole section. It will literally be for twelve feet, fifteen feet, um, for just, you know, that one little piece of property. So they'll go through the whole application process again, and they'll have to get it re-surveyed, re-abreased. If they spell it and give them the deed, then they have what they call. They should not build on, that doesn't mean that someone doesn't try, and a lot of camps I've noticed, and this is probably across every station. Because if I buy a property, I don't pay attention to the easement, and I wanna put a, a mother-in-law's, or I wanna put a, you know. Another garage, and I go ahead and build it without thinking I have. And that's where the city is currently working on a project, where we're locating and making sure we have all of our easements in place. So that when these type, type things come up, we can, we're. So that when these type, types things come up, we can, when you're having that.
Yeah, love the comment.
It's good, he's all over the city, we have sewer line that goes through people's property, we have water line that goes through people's property, um. It is definitely having secret stuff.
So I'm here.
So, I, like I said, I have a person right now who's cool for pitch work, where identifying, relaying what you know, is it Sunny Lynn Lewis? You know that that part, portion of Sunny Lynn area, Lewis property, he has. You know that sewer line on a U sixteen, that's right, they have real property. They can put a fence, but they definitely have.
That's probably something that we'll have, we'll have a. That will actually provide that.
The, the ordinance doesn't survive. It's immunity, so, and that's the hard part too, historically, the city of Alpine, just from what I've observed, didn't keep up with all of that. So property was sold, property was given away, but then we never followed up with, hey, do we have the copy of? And was it filed?
That property, putting in that e that we did at the last meeting, you know, twenty twelve, if that was already built, uh, we're looking to fix that. But then that e is said that property is sold, we didn't use it, but. You know what?
So that's what we're researching, um, there could be e's out there that say there's no easement, but then we have a decent requirement for this. They don't expire, and they're still valid legal documents, they're filed, filed though. And this is why we, you buy property, especially, you know, for some of us, younger individuals, and you think, oh, it's, you know, I can pay cash, I'm going to buy this picture upper. Um, you want to make sure you have that title researched on, to make sure that what you're buying is one, what you're getting, um, and to make. And then you're making sure that, you know, that there's an e's in, or, I didn't know that, my, we have, I know of four right now, where my house is here, my neighbor's here, and my sewer line is connected to their sewer line, and then comes, well, this person caps it, and this person's in trouble, they don't have access to sewer. But this isn't, this isn't the city, this is private property, so they used to be a in-laws and, and children, and they had the two properties, they divided it, hold them, and put that sewer line within.
Responsibility isn't, it's horrible.
So for us, it would be.
For all of the.
Yes, we should have access to, that we should make sure that they're all filed with the county.
That's all.
And that is an expense, like, like Councilor Shaw mentioned, either thing that once something is sold or something gets given away, we have to make sure that the replant's completed, we have to make sure that the e is properly filed, uh, and also make sure that, uh, that they're, that's. I know with the boat, they worked with them to get that.
It's like, they're ready to, that's our body.
Yeah. But we're, we've got half a database with, uh, our record right now, like I said, this is a project we've started, um, by the city's working on, and research to pull. So we can know we're going to divide the city for the e's and so.
I've driven on to discussion item B, City Manager.
Discuss update Article One, Basic Ordinance, International zoning regulation, Section Eighteen, definition home occupancy. The reason I put this back on the agenda, there was a discussion prior in regards to home business and home occupancy. And so I do have Building Official Robert Rupickis here this evening to help discuss this. There is, um, a queue then, I told him, Megan, you're wondering. Um, I do have Robert Rupickis here this evening, uh, to go over it. Some of the conversation is, you know, what is the home business and the permitting for a home business, because we brought that up prior, um, Councilor Stevens said, I brought it up in regards to a couple of people trying to get permitting. Um, in further researching conversation with, with Robert, uh, we noticed that the home occupancy definition really prevents and then doesn't allow specifically for home businesses, uh, because the definition includes what they can and can't do. What shouldn't be part of the definition, it should be actual subsection within the ordinance itself. And so I wanted to bring Robert back up here, if you don't mind, so that he can kind of go over what he has found and what his thoughts are, because this is one of the things we are going to work on the minute, and reach back for the fourth article, so one, that it's clear, and two, you know, doesn't contradict what we're trying to do with home businesses, and then of course, like, to home office. So I'm going to let Robert, um, kind of give you guys the background, have questions, um, I just, Councilor Stevens, they have some questions.
Well.
No, no, we want to kind of get your input before we start making adjustments to the ordinance itself, um, so that we can make sure that we are all on the same. Okay, Robert, before.
Uh, it's. Good place to start with this, there's a lot of areas with our ordinance in the code workplace, uh, especially. Where it's out. Uh, especially going into zoning and into, uh, in the building code. And so, yes, I'd really like y'all's input, what y'all would like to do, so the fact that we are a global municipality, and how much went to deviate from the code, or who wanted to, to, the code, just kind of stick with it that way, uh. Because, like, if you look at our current ordinance, uh. See, in Section Eighteen, where, uh, I would consider the meat potatoes of our home occupation, with its, that, under the definitions, that's the city manager's statement. It's not one of the best decision, I think it is justice with, uh, Councilmember Stevens brought it to the table. On it's, and so, you'll look at that, it's restrictive in certain ways, and compared to the International Zoning Code, it's more restrictive, and it's super lenient to where it's almost counterintuitive with the building codes, such as, like, when it comes to no more than twenty-five percent, the fact that it can use accessory structure, uh, we can go to an accessory structure, life health sake. If that, was that accessory structure then on what were going to allow it to be? Was it a to support the dead loads, live loads that are going to be inside that accessory structure? To build to withstand whatever's going on in there, depending on what its occupancy is going to be, it's going to need to be sprinkler or not sprinkler. So there's like a lot of gray areas, and I get that it's a home occupation. And I guess, I don't know if the, uh, idea for a home occupation is, uh, like, just allow anything to go. And I get it, it's our property, like, before I took the job, I wanted to start a farming company, and that's what, I was starting my garage, and then hopefully move to a personal, uh, property at some point, and grow from there, so I understand needing a good point to, uh, start from. But I also don't think it should be in a sense of, uh, compromising building, uh, standards that are going to jeopardize that homeowner and the people that are around it as well, inside of our residential areas. And so that's where it's like, I'd really like y'all's, that, on where we want to go, where we want to draw these lines, and how, what direction we want to go, because as of right now with our ordinance, uh, myself and, and to see, and to come to the conclusion that we have a lot of patients that are currently illegal to the way our work is on right now. And it's like, how do y'all want to do this, because it's going to affect the community in, in a major way, depending on how we build that. Because obviously, if I'm running a company and I, my overhead goes up, I'm not needing costs, I'm going to put that in my hourly rate or my flat rate, depending on how they do it, and it's going to go to the customer, trades are already pretty expensive as it is here in the city, so I think there's a lot we need to, uh, put into the balance. The conclusion, so we, or, to make my life life.
All right. Um, so, Councilmember Stevens, she's already started the discussion.
So, so, uh, one of the things, home occupation versus home business site, with that, my senses were there's a real distinction. Can you talk about the difference a little bit to, to Councilor Stevens?
Okay, so, uh, with our ordinance, it's, it's kind of vague, it doesn't really, uh, go into it unless you go to R one. And then when you go into R one, it's, it's really restricted, it states what can and can't be there unless it's with the conditional, especially these terms. And it's kind of like, what do y'all want to approve? And so, uh, minus, you'll notice that it does restrict, and that under Section E, you know, believe, yeah, it specifically names certain trades that cannot be in there. And so. It's, like, in our zoning code, let me go to the zoning code, because that's kind of what I'm going to cling from, because I don't want to be trade biased, I guess, if you will, uh. I got so much stuff. So, in the International Zoning Code, twenty twenty-one, uh, they all had it, to, where they had what was provided. I think I provided it, hopefully I did, I'm sorry, I didn't, I'm pretty sure I, I, um, provided this one, it's me, Chapter Eight, Under Special Regulation, or, sorry, Chapter Nine, rather, Under Special Regulation, go on down.
Yes.
And so, you'll see, um, when it states and how it even, um, will say that the only thing for certain use, additional use, is going to be a bar, a beauty shop, or a barber shop. And, um, that it has to be like inside the main occupation, and it can't exceed fifteen percent. So once you start getting to the over fifteen percent, you're now going into what's going to be considered, uh, by I B C, as a base occupancy, occupancy brother. And so it's no longer an R occupation, which would be some kind of residential, you're now turning it into a virtual establishment at that point. And so, I guess it, it's really kind of up to y'all, but for me, it's like, one, I'm going to go off of what's the dead loads and what's going to require sprinklers and stuff like that. So once you start turning into, like, any kind of machinery, if you want to do, say, a woodworking shop in your accessory building, your garage in the backyard, um, one, what is the slab on that garage, can it support all of the machinery you're about to put in there, is it going to start cracking, and have stuff fall over and compromise the structural integrity of that building? Uh, two, you're now introducing, uh, all kinds of dust there, you have proper ventilation, you have proper, uh, fire suppression, so, because once it gets into the dust, it's now, uh, a fire hazard. Or, um, you know, in, also in our ordinance, it states that you're not even supposed to be able to tell that that business is there, but, you know, some of our trades that we have here, you can definitely tell, because they have to have inventory, or none of us would have anything done in a timely manner whatsoever, because everything would have to be ordered, or it would be so expensive, because they would have to go to a retail, pay retail price, which then is getting marked up, or have to eat that cost. So then they have all their inventory out, and it's in the open, because they don't have a structure on their property big enough, because it's going to go into the, uh, uh, impermeable coverage to have a structure big enough to supply a business that has multiple employees, which is also restricted by, uh, home occupation, uh, regulations as well, I hope, am I not doing you justice?
So, so let me try to steer a little bit, that's because you're, you've got a lot of.
All of the issues that we cover, way too many. Issue, yeah.
If, if, when you look at our current zoning ordinance system on one, you can have a bed breakfast at the R V O, you can have a daycare service, you got an educational facility, school, you can have a home occupation, subject to home occupation application provisions, which is what Robert was talking about. You got a library and museum, you got an immiscible incident, incident, general park, or religious incident. Okay, so, those are all the things allowed, you're correct. The question we're struggling, oh, and, further, you may not have retail sales and retail sale or service of food that you bought. My senses were probably all pretty lined up around, that's how I had sense. Part of, or I'd look and say, okay, for a home business, and we talked about beauty salon, a sales gen would have that. Uh, my view is plumbers, electricians, HVAC folks, all the trades, who in most cases live or operate in an R one or residential area, are not doing retail work there, with that part of equipment, they have inventory, and in my view, that ought to be something we ought to allow. Okay, currently, by the ordinance, it's not allowed. So to me, that's one of the items that we're going to consider, particularly our trades where there is, again, no retail, when I talk to a plumber, how many plumbers do the work at your house in their garage? None of them do, okay, they all go to your site, so it's about, do they have inventory? Can they get to your place, same, HVAC, same electricians, all the trades are going on our job site. So my view, we ought to allow that, that was one of the items on my list, okay? Uh, and then there was, the other ones that I raised is, you know, like a home forest. A home forest that doesn't take retail, would it be reasonable for them to do floor arrangements in their house without accepting retail customers? My view, that seems reasonable. A baker, who bakes, they certainly have to meet all the requirements associated with the state law or whatever, but a baker, and I know we have bakers in the city of Alpine, bake at home, they take it out to where they go, and then they take it to plumbers' market, and those are the sorts of businesses, in my view, that the ordinance doesn't allow. And in my view, I get Robert, go figure out how we allow that to occur.
Yeah, but, thanks, however, on your college also, that's state.
Yeah, yeah, you got, you got the state, the, the, whatever, the Texas license, whatever requirements are that you got to comply with.
I need to comply with, yeah, we really can't.
I understand, but in terms of authorizing that in the residential area, if it's compliant, and you still meet the requirements of the state, but from a licensing standpoint. You know, there are two, because people are new, right, but they're back to it. I think the question rolling up in my mind was over, and the individual was doing taxi girl. And in my mind, that's a pretty hard one to hide, even though my reaction would be, the taxi girl was considering how to do it, and didn't have the retail, makes sense to do. But it still needs to be compliant with fire, water, sanitation, all the other elements, so there's no smell, and that's part of what, well, Ed has Robert to go off. Well, my view is, if we're lying around the trades, and it's talked about, I would say, Robert, go figure it out, and come back with a recommendation about how we modify what we need to do. Uh, if there are businesses that require a license, but no special facilities, then we ought to say, hey, hey, Robert, help us understand that, like the beauty parlor, the beauty sponsor, whatever, they have quality, they're, they're fine, they have all those requirements. To me, that's all I wanted to get to, was to allow that to, to occur, but that was my intent. Does that make sense? And that's, that's the thing, Chris, that's what Robert's trying to do, is work it out. I love your example, world. What, what do you find, you guys made an action, I love where world, that, that, if you run this business, obvious, one, they run this business, it makes a lot industrial area, you operate industrial, because you have that, a tax purpose, special requirements, all the elements that should apply to, to. So is that helpful?
Sort of. I'm going to, to get guidance on how y'all want to see the ordinance be broken, because the way the ordinance is written by now, there's no appliance, right now.
So right now, there's not going to be the enforcement, because it does not, this is what I've come up with for a game plan for state. One, of course, we always provide other signatures, everybody around us. One, the first thing we need to do is remove the, the, the definition. So we need to clarify or distinguish the difference between home occupancy and home business within the definition itself. We then need to outline what is allowed or considered a home business, providing the current list for R one, adding additional, um, guideline, I hate the word guideline, because they can be, uh, uh, restrictions, non restrictions involving inventory, put in doors, cottage law, um, I know you need bakers, um, and like. Um, and then updating to food, which specifically is not allowed. But I'm kind of like, step, through, you know, the definition side, because obviously, not helpful. Um, and then two, make sure we outline what we consider a home business. I think that coincides perfectly with what you had provided in regards to the I C C. And when you look at the fifteen percent of the. Um, you look at the the fifteen percent of the core area, um, kind of. You can include some of the strategies to within what they're anticipating. Um, get a draft put together, then go back to capital and maybe give it to them, be like, whoa, I don't want that. That really does need to be industrial because of woodwork. Um, I think kind of already know who's operating. How they're operating each, not that we're trying to target any one person, but we also want to take into consideration health and safety. Um, fire is a big thing. We definitely don't want to have someone overloading their circuits. Um, about having a wire correctly next to you know to go out. And so I think we can start there. Um, and then present the draft and like take some representation where they're at. As far as enforcement what's in place right now, it seems to be more possible. So the public's going to get a little bit of a wee wave as you go through and hopefully get an effect.
But I don't want go, I don't don't have any help, no pockets. Simply said, based on what you ground. And like those.
We have to probably accept the reason this actually occurred. Allowed. A home business down town that are opening spaces. So you're really unfortunately. That's why I'm really was hoping to get more, because y'all are like, how we want to build that. Because for me, y'all are saying draft, I'm just going to go to. Seems complex. But, sorry.
But you're not forcing it right now. If you're bringing something to us, I guess, right?
Yeah, we got, so you're, so you are going to go with code because that's where we are going to start. That's the cleanest version to start with the code. And then looking at other cities, okay, well, we see how there was code, but then they made the exemptions or they say, but these will also be allowed. Um, we're going to focus on R one, um, and then be applied to R two. And so code will be the very first thing to apply it. That's going to give you the cleanest definitions. Um, and then we'll expand after we get a little bit of a draft, say, okay, these are the businesses we kind of know are operating. Convention, like we know we have supporters probably in town, uh, take into consideration. Uh, we know that there are people baking for home, so we want to add cottage law, cottage law, reference the state. And the codes that those are required. You're right, with the. Specific code will be simple.
I think you still should enforce the smells, toxins.
It's already.
We don't all of a sudden, you know, some crazy thing go down.
Yeah.
And just to go through really quickly. Um, is there anything where like home offices or anything like in our twenty first century post COVID? Is that someone's consulting in their back room in their office? Does that mean? Obviously, I I don't think that's.
So currently underdressed loud. So it it's, you can have a professional office, technology office, it shows. So I I could be a at home, built computer technician. That's currently allowed.
We're, you know, quite a few folks that work remotely. That's a good thing because we're way far out.
And we can also put those clarifying, those type of businesses uh or profession. Um, so that it does, like I said, we're going to care.
Sure, and then just ready for you, uh, what trades, yes, with those explorers. The bakers thing, I think we might run into where we can't bring.
No, we can't.
Yeah, we're in college.
So we can reference the cottage law. So the basic thing that covers the city with, okay, we know you're doing this and we know you're not following the cottage law. So it does become a different.
Got you.
Direction, but we just want to make sure people understand and we encourage you to bake it well, we encourage you to pick it on how you want to do it. But you really do need to follow the state law.
And then the last two quick things, adult business, is that what I think it is or is that a bar?
That that's not levels. We have a whole separate ordinance. We should have put a big X on that, we know that's why.
And then how much does one of these permits cost right now? Per year or per time?
And we can also include within our current, I know we have to begin at the permitting because we have the fees. Um, if they include, maybe include an additional fee or may it where it's, it's not transverse, just to make sure that. My mom operated the hair salon and now I'm going to do it and my granddaughter.
Sure.
That was efficient. Yeah, I wish my daughter would think.
And so I'm weird. So I already have a draft. Possible, however, it is not in the direction. Because of the fact that it's it's some of these that we're wanting to allow are considered a business. They require cannibalism, it's going to come out of the I B C. And no I B C is allowed. Uh, I should have provided this squad, I think, but it's off, it's classification, you're now going out of the way to draw. Into whether it be hazardous industrial battery business. Uh. Or storage, I'm sorry. Predominantly for the trade because like it's safe for a forest, there's nothing wrong with forests at all. Because we're only going to have a couple of refrigerators to put it in and I guess to do their arrangements, it's really not a factor. But it would be more of the. Uh. More like. More noticeable trades such as the taxidermy, like you have to have all of this ventilation stuffs to meet our current ordinance where it can't be smelled. Not bothering people, our plumbers, they wouldn't, like, edit their ordinance right now, it specifically says they cannot have it in. They're uh. In their residential areas, but sort of involves some of their age back with electrician. And then even if we did, then we need to change, like make some exceptions into it to where it's like, okay, how are we going to restrict. Their inventory or not restrict their inventory. It states that you can't, currently in our current code. Um, they can't be noticeable from outside whatsoever at all. And so that means no P V C or gas piping outside, no. Water heaters stacked up outside waiting to be recycled or anything else. So yeah, they can't, it has to look like president. Based off of that. And so that's where it's like, I'd like y'all's feedback because it's like, I can bring it to y'all. You know, I can give it to you, I can push it through. Uh. Uh, our legal team and have it come to y'all, but. It's not in the direction that I'm hearing that we're wanting to go. So that's why I'm saying.
What is our, so in that whole direction, you can flex role. That's a very strong message from me.
Right, yeah. And so if we're wanting to do flexibility, how flexible, flexible are we wanting to be? Because for me, I don't really have any grounds, you know, how flexible we are. So there's really, I don't hold on flexibility. Home business, which is one trade for a taxidermy. In order we be something to where it's a jumped backyard, it's a can't or be able to figure out. I mean, already in our ordinance, it's that way, it's an accumulation of drunken greed, yeah.
So I, so that we stay on on task here, I think the very first thing really is, is to provide you the the first draft of the paintings. Of the meat bones. And then go through and start saying, okay, well, we really do want to encourage this, we want to encourage this, and we take those adjustments as necessary. I don't want to give you the, we're going to let anyone and everyone do whatever they want, the draft. And then we come back with, well, now we have this problem, this problem, this problem. So the code really is the focal point to start and then go through and kind of clear that with, okay, well, we do want to allow this type of business. I think it also provides the the guidance with the definition. Um, we know that definitions are important, uh, we come across this in almost every ordinance that we look at. And understanding, are we clearly and accurately defining what we're trying to. Um, so I think, I mean, if you've got a draft, we can sit down, we'll start looking at it, we'll, like, we need to remove, obviously, the, 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 the. And keep it a flat definition. And then you go through and and focus on R one. Um, and if you want to consider what can, how does it affect R two, by fact, R two allows R one. And so remember, it is ineffective. Okay, so what I. So we want Rob, go ahead and give us the bare bones, basic code stuff first. Send the draft to us. Meanwhile, we're thinking about what businesses we think should be allowable. This is not going to be solved tonight. It's multiple conversations over several different meetings. And then we'll go forward. Does that help you? Bare bones, basic code, send it to us and then first to think.
How many of our businesses are you not, like, what would they be? All of our trades set for. So if you look at. Our electricians, plumbers, uh, age back, I'm sorry, yeah. One. That's it. So three in total. So if you go through and do your legal search, all of them except for. One age back company, one electric company, one. None of them are compliant with our own ordinance, which our current ordinance says it is.
But remember, when we do this update, we can put specific language that allows them to be grandfathered. And we can name them and say that effective this date moving forward, it's not allowed. But we don't have to ruin what's currently in place because, I mean, it does affect quite a few people. Um, and we we don't want to then just, well, then I just won't do it because then I know when I had the water leak last. Really needed a plumber. Um, so I I think we do have a lot of work. This is not going to be done within the next couple of months. And we're just going to get you, like I said, step one, and then we'll start working from there on how we want to make sure, um. We know the direction the city wants to go. You also have to remember what you're deciding with these types of ordinances also is going to be part of our comprehensive plan. So we want to make sure that we don't rush into this just to be compliant or to try to get someone the ability to have a home business. Um, because down the road, we may come in with a comprehensive plan that we love and that says, oh, well, really shouldn't have been done. So patience is a virtue. Does that help?
Yeah.
It does. All right, we'll be okay.
Yeah.
All right.
My only question is, do you want the, pretty much have a whole tentative. Uh, zoning, do you want the whole, which a lot of, or just the that?
No, then all, so we can start knocking down everything.
Okay, I'll put it on pause if we have like. A few things, so maybe by the end of the week.
Now, capital is going to sound this won't be on the October first agenda.
No.
Or the fifteenth, because it is the end of a fiscal year, new fiscal year and. All right, well, thank you, Rob. I'd like, I'd like time to read. Thank you. Thank you for you. Okay, all right, at that, we're going to take a five minute break. Session, moving on to action items. First second item, who else?
Thank you. The first item tonight is to approve the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty four dash zero nine dash zero two. And ordinance amending chapter ten animals, the Alpine Code of Ordinances. Amending section ten dash eight, city sponsored clinic authorized. To update who can authorize the city sponsored grazing vaccination registration study. Amending section ten dash ten wildlife meeting. To amend the definition of objective wildlife meeting. Amending section ten dash eleven, hunting, providing clarifying language that hunting is prohibited within the city limits of Alpine. Except for the capture and control of nuisance animals by authorized government officials. Amending section ten dash forty two, public nuisance is designated to provide clarifying language. Provide additional circumstances that constitute an animal nuisance. And making section references to other relevant sections within the chapter. Removing section ten dash forty five, sending bulls, lions or jack that's set. And relocating the section to a more appropriate portion of the code. And establishing section ten dash ninety five, standing bull, science or jack that's set under division two permit. Amending section ten dash nine, guide dogs by updating the title to a more appropriate language. Ten dash nine, service animals, to better align with the federal and state verbiage and requirements. Ten dash nine service animals to better align with the federal and state verbiage and requirements. Providing that the establishment of up to a five hundred dollar penalty for occurrence for violations of the ordinance. And providing for the following, finding the facts, enactment, repealer penalty, savings, separability, proper notice and meaning, and effective date clauses. Do you motion?
Your answer is presented.
Right, city manager.
Um, when the last time the Alpine Animal Rising Board met, they looked at seeing like all of the ordinance altogether. Um, some of it's just little things like the definition, a terminology like guide dog, now guide animals. And they wanted to go through and do it all at once, um, so that it was like a clean version going uh moving forward. I do have Jennifer through in a child box. Um, present the meeting as well as Chief, if you have additional questions. Um, but this is just routine um update in of the ordinance for animal.
Okay, Councilmember Martinez. Oh, I I agree with all this change. I was at the meeting that that that's why I came in. Well, when you apply.
Councilmember Escudero. Okay, Councilmember Stevens.
So I've got questions.
As always.
Yes. Does Mary Bell's pig need your warrants?
Um. Technically no.
That's what I thought.
She's kind of been, that property's kind of been grandfathered in.
Okay, so I just want to make sure her place. I I checked the pig and dog while I was over here. He was sitting underneath the trampoline.
Yeah, yeah, we're we're not messing with her. We haven't had any of.
Okay, thank you. I want to make sure.
She's very bothered. She's very.
Yeah, well, so some more.
If everybody's okay with that.
Okay, I'm okay. I've got plenty of line there, nothing else. The next one has to do with animals and vehicles. So page eighty nine dash or nine twelve talks about animals and vehicles. And I really don't have perspective on this. Do we cite people with goose dogs at the back of the other cap joint? And in my opinion, but this says you're not supposed to do that. So, uh, I mean, that's that's almost ranch dogs are waves. They're running around the back of the cap joint. This ordinance includes that, so brothers, they have what's our law.
So, um, they need to be safely restricted if they're in the back.
I don't know what that means, just right now, lots of trouble.
Yeah, they they shouldn't be able to fly out. But a an animal control officer really can't be pulling people over on the side of the road. They don't have the lights, we don't have the capabilities of that. We call it in to have somebody pull them over, but it's it's a hard one to enforce. If they're parked and it's something that we can discuss with somebody, um, that's where we get to enforce.
I I'm just, I I get the chance, but also what's said.
No.
Kind of said it's just. Problem, is what I was thinking. Is the reason why here?
For the ordinance revisions? No, not at all. Um, a lot of this was, and you'll see I moved these things around because I felt like, um, some of it was in not the appropriate section.
Yeah.
Pretty much. Uh, so it does look like a lot of red it is, but the red, a lot of that red has been moved to another section, so that wasn't.
I don't know if you just said there was maybe gunshots, but we have gunshots in our game. Well, I'm wondering, sometimes there's might be like BB guns or something. I don't know, maybe when I was a kid, I had an aerosol gun and I used to like, you know, shoot around, but I, you know, whatever that is. Are we aerosols, BB guns, people shooting at a squirrel? That's not a lot.
A lot.
Good.
Cool. BB BB guns are restricted.
Gotcha.
Especially.
Yes, I completely agree. If someone, uh, sure, this is. I tried to try to release all good.
Yeah, we're we're doing really well. Um, I haven't been able to, I haven't done a report, I guess we're done with that, but. Um, we have seen a lot less cats this year in our shelter, a lot, a lot less barrel euthanases, and I think it's.
They're doing awesome. My wife was at Chief's always house on Monday. She's going to come back next.
Right.
Uh, but, uh, and, uh, bird help, uh, bird falls out of the tree. It hurt my heart. It's happened to me a couple of times. I, you know, don't want to touch it. I'm going to leave it there. If someone helped in some way, are they going to get some huge fine or in jail?
Yeah, I would, I would probably contact the game board just to make sure that you're not dealing with a species that's protected anyway and.
I got a big part.
You put a baby bird, I don't have any problem with that, but that's a key word in the question.
I think that's my question.
Councilmember Stevens. So City Secretary, ordinance twenty three four dash nine dash two, ask you. I'll count the first one of the here. All right, moving on to action item B, city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. The next item is to approve the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty four dash zero nine dash zero three. An ordinance admitting chapter eighty two solid waste. Providing for updated definitions throughout the chapter, providing clarification that disposing of past or other byproduct of burning is considered illegal dumping. Providing clarification that bulky items placed next to collection containers is considered illegal dumping. Establishing responsibilities of residential and commercial sanitation accounts. Providing clarification that rates and fees are established by the approved contract with the wave follower contractor. Providing for updated requirements concerning disposal of dead animals, disposal of construction and demolition waste. And bulky waste disposal. Providing clarification regarding offenses, penalties and fines for violations of the chapter. Establishing division three scrap tires. That provides criteria and guidelines for the proper disposal and storage, transportation, collection and processing of tires. Providing establishment of up to a four thousand dollar penalty per occurrence for violations of the ordinance. And providing for the following, findings of facts, enactment, nuclear penalty, savings, separability, proper notice and meaning and effective date clauses.
I need a motion. I need a second. My say. Okay, city manager, discussion. This item actually has been an ongoing discussion with, uh, Adelina Beal, um, in regard to some of the issues we've had with illegal dumping. And the current ordinance and the way it reads actually is very outdated. Um, it does list the actual rates within the the ordinance, which obviously are not current. And haven't been current for about ten years. Uh, so Adelina took the time and she went through all of the different areas. This is being brought to you because we have had issues. We've had issues with trying to, um, actually move forward with illegal dumping. So we wanted to clear up our ordinance so that it is easier to prosecute those who illegal dump. Um, and make it clear that it isn't acceptable and to put some teeth behind it and to include that fine that is allowable by the state. The big section that is in here is also the tire section. There's a whole new section on, uh, the tire hauling. And, um, those who are hauling tires, those who have tire businesses, um, those who try to store tires for whatever reason. Um, we are noticing that. We noticed it a couple of years ago. Um, we have worked back with the commercial retailers on their tire collections, making sure that they disposable, dispose of them correctly. We've also implemented several tire advocacy events, trying to encourage residents to dispose of their tires properly, so we wanted to make sure. That we included as much as possible with the tire, um, side of it and making sure that they understand that they really do need to go through a permitting process. Um, it's all outlined in here. The other big section of it is the illegal dumping. And what constitutes illegal dumping? Um, we've had on several occasions where individuals. Um, really have lived up to the addicted ships concept with our dumpsters. And so they tried to put as much of it in there as possible. Um, that is not allowable. Um, this is an expense to the city. Um, currently, um, we have been working with TDS and it's been gracious enough to clean the dumpsters out. Um, without targeting us, but it's starting to add up. A lot of what's being disposed of is more construction material. I took my fencing down, I put it all in the dumpster instead of recycling it and taking it to where it needs to be. Um, I had a rock wall, I threw all the rocks in the dumpster. Our trash, um. Uh, vehicles that are utilized by TDS cannot handle that weight. And so these are complaints because then residents are like, well, I can't go to my own trash. But it's also a complaint because then the dumpster doesn't get empty and then people are like, why isn't it being empty? Um, and also does provide that fine. Um, before it was kind of what we thought we could go up to two hundred dollars, two thousand dollars. The state actually outlines that we can go up to four thousand dollars. Um, and then of course, the other sections in here are defining what residential dumpsters are, defining what commercial dumpsters are. What is the responsibility of a resident? Um, we do encourage people to obviously throw their trash away, but we don't encourage you to burn your trash and then throw it in the dumpster. Where it may or may not start a dumpster fire. We've heard we've had eight so far. Um, we are trying to discourage that, but the way our ordinance reads, there's nothing we can do to enforce, um, or to spread it, so that's been included. Um, and of course, there's all the removal of anything, uh, referring to actual costs. Um, we made sure to do that it's council approved contract, council approved, um, rates, that kind of thing. Um, there is one thing that needs to be amended. It was brought to my attention before the meeting. Um, Adelina did a great job, but when we look at the disposal, um, for demolition. Um, we indicate that it has to be used in a roll off. Um, we just talked about home businesses, most home businesses don't own roll offs. So when they do do any type of handyman work or construction work, they're utilizing trailers, um, most often. So we would like to amend it to include that information as well. And Robert, um, is here as well to discuss that part of the permitting process so that he can enforce it. Really hard to enforce the roll off side of it, so we want to make sure that we give them the option of deal to meet the trailer's goal as well. So I'm pretty sure you have a thousand and one questions because we really are changing with this ordinance significantly, um, and Adelina and Robert are both present. Councilmember Escudero. Okay, Councilmember Stevens.
So I want to understand a little more about trailer versus roll off. Uh, for construction, and then it's all for roll off, they show up and then leave out all the way.
He didn't have a question about it. Pull it over.
No, they're good. So I can pay. Right? So my concern was like when doing plumbing, I never called for roll off or had a trailer with me because I knew that. Something that they, so I always utilize my contractor's roll offs, like Ryan Stees, I've done his job before. He has his own dump trailer, which isn't technically a roll off, so I was trying to, uh. Incorporate it to where, um, they're okay to use those trailers, because so it's not like as restrictive, you know what I mean? And so, uh, I.
So so we were strict, we don't allow people to use roll off trucks?
Well, it's kind of vague in there, and that's why I was like hoping to get an amendment to clean all that up so it's not vague. And it's very clear that they can do one or the other. Because if you read it in, uh, section eighty two, ten, forty four, oh, I'm sorry, eighty two, ten, forty five, disposal of construction demolition ways. Uh, it states contractors are required to have a roll off container on site for all construction debris or shall be inspected. Uh, for valid, uh, landfill receipts. And so I was just wanting to add contractors are required to have a roll off container or trailer on site for all construction debris to obtain a permit. And shall be, uh, in. Sorry, I can't read my handwriting right here. Inspected for holding a valid landfill, uh, receipt upon final, uh, inspection. So that you can have either one, but we know that it wasn't illegally dumped, you know, because we just had an incident where somebody had a bunch of debris on their trailer. And then it went down one of the alleys, just dumping a little bit into each dumpster. And so this way it's very clear, you can have a roll off or you can use your own dumpster for your construction company. And but also has checks and balances, so we know that it did make its way to the landfill properly.
So since this is a person who don't, I'd like to. Shoot that had Robert's words.
Robert, can you repeat those words?
Contractors are required to have a roll off container or trailer on site for all construction debris to obtain a permit. And shall be inspected for holding valid landfill receipts upon final inspection.
I need a second. Okay, any discussion on the amendment? Let's vote on the amendment. City secretary, the amendment passed unanimously. Now we need to vote on the original ordinance.
Well, I raised the question. I'm sorry, I don't make the interrupt, mayor, but no one else got a chance to ask questions.
Okay. And no one else is discussing, okay. Okay, well, I didn't help if anybody had any discussion.
I'm sorry.
Um, yeah, so not on the amendment, on just the ordinance changes, correct? Cool. Uh, clarification regarding the ashes, like people have campfires, little adobe camp things. They, we let those completely go out and they still can't put that into a dumpster, or what is the the thing there?
So we don't have campfires in the city limits. Um, they have to be enclosed. My right to.
No, it has to be contained.
Contained, sorry.
Yeah, so contained can be just rocks around it and having digging underneath or above. I went and looked at.
I think he's like campfire like when I go out to the lake, sorry.
Yeah, no, not a bonfire, but if rocks are around it's completed and it goes down or it's in above ground, it is allowed in our fire. Burn notices or the county ordinance does not like.
Correct.
And that's why I'm just like, what do what do people do with their ashes? Uh, I mean, it gets very cool on their yard after, I guess.
I just, I asked her the same question.
So I guess it's it's about quantity, but like when you have a fire pit and we had issues like this. You scrape and it's dirt and it's burnt ashes and it's going in a dumpster and that's not allowed in the residential dumpster. Your residential dumpster is like looking for your household waste. So that would have to be, uh, designated trip either to the recycling center or you have to make sure that it's it's, uh, all put out. No rest, no embers or nothing like that, or landfill trip, because it's just about the size of the waste.
Okay, and in respect, what I'm sorry, could you tell us who you are?
Oh, sorry, Adelina Bell, Environment Service Coordinator.
Awesome. And so just to totally clarify that, not to make you repeat it all. If ashes are put out completely, dumped a bunch of water on it. We can't.
But I I would just, it it would be the size, like for instance, if you have your grill and you have a little.
Charp.
Montry bag.
Yeah.
Yeah, I feel like that's not burning, uh, trash or burning other products, it's your charcoal. If it's odd, it's a small load, it's fine, but if you're cleaning a fire pit, you use chowels and it's more than a cubic yard, that's not allowed.
And so it's cubic yard inside of here?
We don't have that definition between those two.
I just want them to be clear because I know we got a lot of folks, I mean, it's going to be folded another couple of months, they all like a little campfire and I mean, as we described it. I just, yeah, uh, I think something to think about. I I, you know, I don't want burning dumpsters either, but.
It's it's just the like a tricky question because you don't want to kill people. Like for instance, a yard waste, it doesn't go in the in the dumpsters, but somebody said, I just pulled five picks and go hits. And it's a little trash bag, like. I don't want to say do it, but, um, it's not going to overwhelm your neighbors.
Yeah.
Trash, I'm willing to dispose, so I'm willing to dispose your trash, so.
We can't put long waste in there either.
And if you have your house and when you have, if one part of your yard is and then you put tree limbs and. You're only allowing most of the yard, a mountain, that's a lot for household waste. But if your yard is, I'm guessing you're filling a three cubic yard dumpster with yard waste, you're actually doing a disservice to your neighbors.
Uh, I've never had a trouble on my block, but. Other troubles, but, uh, you know, I I tried to do the lawn mower where it picks up some, I try to control the goat heads, right? And we even do goat head pickups occasionally.
But that's why I had my trailer out there, so we wouldn't.
Okay, now I remember, I'm sorry. Okay, now I remember, I'm sorry. Certainly.
Yeah.
Um, okay, uh.
We do have a yard waste roll-off, but that's it. So we do have issues with people for your trash. And we're not talking a little campfire, a little bar, some stocking barrels.
Barrels.
And then trying stuff into the dumpster.
Or pooping the, the trash with heavy equipment and loading a, a three cubic yard dumpster.
Really, yeah, yeah, and I feel like there's a easy way to be like, this is. Okay, this is it. I mean, there are possibly is a little gray area, but.
There's always gonna be a gray area when it comes to trash.
Yeah.
Um, but we are seeing more and more, or, or really just miss, you see it, because you're like, oh yeah, it's just a little bag. I put it up, you know, I put it in a trash bag, I tie it up, doesn't make a big difference. But when you have someone come in with a front motor and pick up all of their bulk of trash, dump it in.
Or, or maybe like grill barrels or something like that, it's, it's the size that it's gonna overwhelm the dumpster.
Yeah, and, and so I just, I, I don't want to sit on this for too much longer, but you know, I used to mow her. I dumped the back thing with all the goat heads in there. Please come by, that would be illegal. And if we change this right now.
Well, it's still, you can't put yard waste like the, the.
Yeah, but that is the current ordinance that you can't do that.
Yeah.
The current ordinance has a.
Wow, I, I, it's hard to believe to me. I didn't even know. Uh, what do y'all feel on that? I mean.
I feel like my neighbor, my neighbor puts way too much yard waste in the dumpster. It was so full.
Yours too. We actually had an illegal space in her neighborhood, her neighbor.
Is it, if, if, if you, if they.
And the thing is, we have a lot of contractors, like building contractors. That they have small businesses and everybody's putting it in the dumpster. They're, they're building the customer and they're disposing it for a period of, in our residential dumpster. And they're not even including it in their business plan to dispose of it.
And then don't forget, we do have bulk pickup. We went from a quarterly to a monthly. So if you're trimming your trees or you're doing major yard work, you can have it at bulk.
Yeah, but you're just sitting in your backyard for like, you know, at least two, three weeks a month, yeah. So, and then all the, you know.
But the recycling center, when they do Saturday, it says tree limbs and yard waste. As long as it's not full.
Yeah. But the goat heads, you don't want to put in there.
Well, they, they put cell, they don't get mulched, the goat heads, so they're not gonna get out of the way.
Uh.
Councilor Martinez.
Uh, uh, how do you want to reinforce this? How do you know, uh, you said that you have four thousand bucks penalty, but. We have so many trash, so how do you know that the neighbor, uh, mowed the trees and picked it and they put it in the dumpster? How do you know that was that neighbor? You gotta find, you know what I mean?
So Adalina has established a great program. Um, not only do we get a lot of complaints, but we get a lot of pictures of vehicles and people actually disposing of the waste. Um, when someone trims their trees and utilizes the dumpster like right there by their house, obviously can connect the two. And but we also do provide a lot of education. We have door knockers that we, she goes out and she puts to kind of say, hey, we know you're doing something not. Quite right, you need to let us know. Um, we've actually had several incidents where unfortunately you can tie it back to the individual because the construction is. Fully taking place at their residence. Um, I know here at City Hall, um, people illegally dumped and their address was all over it. Believe it or not, i- i- it, there are some cases where we won't. There, there won't be any way to do it. Um, but Adalina has kind of become the sleuth of Alpine when it comes to illegal dumping. And you, you have a lot of residents in Alpine who are concerned because it's, it's so tightly and they don't want it.
And the worst. The, the door hoppers work really well, even if it was done out of ignorance. They have the opportunity to clean it if it's something easy. If it's not, it could be like, uh, okay, well, don't do it again or something like that, but. They do come forward and say, I didn't know you couldn't put the chair there, or I didn't know this. But then that's where you have the opportunity to tell them about full pickup, recycling center and every other option for proper disposal.
So not everyone gets that taken. I mean, we've had several cases unfortunately come up where it's hard to prosecute them because our ordinance doesn't provide enough. Structure and place to say, this is what you did, this is how you did it, this is. And, and the teeth to convict them or to move forward. Um, so this is one of the reasons why we're doing it, is to get that so we can actually move forward with prosecution. And she's right, not everyone really knows. And this is her part of the education piece where she can actually go out and say, okay, this is what you can and can't do. I made the comment earlier, if it shifts, because when I moved to Alpine, that is how the dumpsters were defined. Well, if you can put it in there, then you can use it in fine. I cut up a couch in this location.
Yeah, we probably all broke in the sorting in.
But, but let's say, it's like, I, I didn't know, I just moved here, the apartment had a couch I didn't want, I just wanted it out. I didn't know the, the ins and outs, so that we do have college people coming in, we have border patrol, law enforcement coming in and out. Um, we just want to make sure that we can provide, one, the education. Two, if they do do it and it's had a huge impact, I mean, five dumpsters of construction debris. That makes sense, and that, that hurts the community, um, but that we can move forward with the prosecution.
And a question about the animals, oh, so you said like, uh, dead animals on the dumpsters, so maybe some dead, uh. Cat and dog and.
You can, but it does reference that it, like if it's like spoiled meat or something like that, double bag it, it's kind of goes back to the size. Like if it's your little pet bird or it's your cat, it's like. Something that it's not gonna rot or cause an issue in a week that they pick your dumpster. Um, I feel like they could call animal control to probably dispose of a bigger item, I don't know.
Yeah, they'll pick them up.
They, uh-huh, but like, is this, the, the dead animal, animal section or the meat section is for like if your freezer goes off and you have a freezer full of meat. We ask residents to double bag it because they are using a residential dumpster that is shared and it doesn't get picked up once a week.
Yeah.
So.
Yes. That's lies.
If, 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 if that's the case, like special weird situations, it's best to reach stuff to the city and find the best way to do it. Or go on Facebook.
Don't do that.
Don't put always. I was just gonna say, uh, awesome work you're doing, a good project over there.
We're gonna start in October. So everybody can buy any of the warm over.
Those are some good doubts, thank you. And then the next one was for Chief Asoya. In that, when we talk about like, we, because even from the park school side of things, when we talk about. The, uh, legality of something, uh, because we were talking about dusted on, uh, park rolls and all that kind of stuff. I don't think, correct me if I'm wrong, but I'd view ordinance as, as not as right or wrong. But they trigger the ability for you to act to determine how aggressive the events is.
Yes, and it also can provide their way to educate the community and to bring knowledge to certain things. Because, um. I grew up here in Alpine and I could say we're backwards. Uh, hillbilly down there sometimes and running the back of pickup trucks and walking around with BB guns growing up as a kid, but. There's, and so a lot of people just need to be educated to the things that, well, you can't do this. Because this is a big consequence of what may happen. And so, um, it brings to light to certain things. If, if, if they go around town walking around with a BB gun and you see them, it's like, well, you can't, you can't have that in Alpine. Form them, but then it'd be another occasion and you see them where they. Uh, killing a bunch of, uh, birds or shooting at cats or dogs and things like that, injuring. And that, yeah, then it forces and, and it. Then they need to get to the judicial system, so.
I think you said that's your discretion and you know your people's.
Yes.
All right, so with that, the original motion.
They can amend it to include one more, uh, yard, uh, personal bond waste. What do y'all think about that?
I'll be a second.
It's one bag, it's one bag, it's a big bag, one more yard permit. And that would give the police where discretion to be like, that's your law against versus.
Mayor, can I have a moment to check this file in our contract?
Yes.
I don't want you to waste.
Yeah. Per month, one more, it says industrial back, you know what I'm talking, right?
That all suggests.
Yeah.
People will know.
Because I think nobody knows the ordinance, they're just trying to get the ability to get their grabs.
I, I, I'm a mulcher.
That's a reach out, that's right now. Yeah. Okay. That's a great idea. Hey, what's the appetite? Is this not gonna bad, so I don't want to waste your time. I don't want to go against you, so if you want to come up here and tell us that you don't like that idea, then you can say that to us.
What was, what was it? Um, I just don't think it's in the contract. I think if there's side loader trucks. They can't, um, process the tree limbs or the yard waste or the. That, so, the new trucks.
So it says, that's a, the, it's under bulk pickup under the contract.
Okay, so we.
Yeah, it says specifically, we need some small yard waste, it's under bulk pickup. Uh, then it said brush must be cutged for, put length tied together, not just thirty-five pound. These are small yard wastes, in fact, so it's critical.
Bags are true, but.
The bulk pickup, you just put it in a bucket.
Yeah, so you call them before and then you put it out there and they'll come here, or you could go to help.
What do you call?
I can enjoy.
Yes, yes. Okay, let's go back to the original motion. So we vote on the original motion as noted.
I don't. It's something.
Hi.
Hi.
City Secretary, the original motion as affiliated, as passed for ordinance twenty-two-four dash oh nine dash oh. And moving on to action, I O C, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I O C is to approve the second and final reading of ordinance twenty-two-four dash zero-nine dash zero-five. And ordinance approving the fiscal year twenty-two-four, twenty-two-five proposed tax rate. Of point four-three-nine-two-zero-five for a hundred dollar assessed valuation for the fiscal year. October first, twenty-twenty-four through September thirty, twenty-twenty-five. For the use in support of the municipal government of the city of Alpine, Texas.
I need a motion. The second.
Um, actually, Mayor. I, I have to stop you, I'm sorry, because this is the proposed tax rate, this motion has to be specifically read. Um, per the state.
I approve the second and final reading of ordinance twenty-two-four dash four-nine-five. And, uh, appropriate fiscal G twenty-four. Tax rate of zero-four-four-three-nine-two-zero-five for a hundred. Uh, assessed value of the fiscal G of October first, twenty-two-four to September first, twenty-two-five for use in support of the municipal government. Of the city of Alpine, Texas. The second.
All right, discussion, City Manager.
So there is a very specific.
They love, have a specific motion you have, like that she thinks that you're increasing her. Okay, so she needs to say, if you want to have her, the papers.
There you go.
Okay.
Thank you, babe.
All right.
Okay, go ahead and read that. I vote that the appropriate tax rate being increased by adoption of the tax rate of zero-point-four-three-nine-two-five. Which is effectively a three-point-five percent increase. The tax rate, tax rate of zero-four-four-three-nine-two-zero-five for a hundred. Valuation has been recommended for FY twenty-two-four dash twenty-two-five budget. Maintenance operation is zero-point-four-two-nine-zero-zero-seven. And if this, and six is zero-point-zero-one-zero-one. In a second.
One second then.
That would've been good for all of us to.
Every year I forget it, I apologize.
Yes, okay, so next year we will remember.
Yes.
All right, City Manager.
Uh, so this is the second and final reading of the proposed tax rate. And City Council has this set list on multiple occasions proposing a tax rate of point-four-three-nine-two-zero-five. This is an increase in the tax rate over the effective tax rate of three-point-five percent. This provides maintenance and operating point-four-two-nine-zero-zero-seven and interest in seeking of a rate of point-zero-one-zero-one-nine-eight. I know that there was some confusion when, uh, we look at the total raised values compared to, um, what we had discussed earlier. Last, last week I was a little tired, I guess, because I couldn't clearly think how to articulate it. So the reason why you see the increase from the budget side is thirteen thousand. But when you look at the M and O, it is significantly higher, it's closer to the, we, they're mentioned ninety-something thousand dollars. Um, I didn't articulate that well, I do apologize. Our interest in seeking has decreased. So we're not bringing in as much on that and, and that's going to the M and O, which is where you see the larger increase. When you look at what was proposed for the budget and the overall increase, it's not distinguishing between maintenance and operating and INS. It's distinguishing between the whole collection of taxes. So when you look at what we brought in for this year and what we're bringing in for next year. As a whole, it's not a large increase. But when you look at our INS, we're not requesting a hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars, we're only requesting fifty-one. That extra difference is going into M and O, which is where you saw the larger increase. I do apologize for that.
Thank you.
I had to refuse what I learned from the conversation.
I had to sleep for, for a whole. But so the M and O had increased, the INS were bringing in less. So, but from the budget as a whole, um, we're not bringing in more, uh, significantly more than thirteen thousand.
Councilmember Stevens?
So for my property policy, the overall tax rates.
Yes, sir.
So I'm, so tax base. The five of the fifth of one, ninety-five fifty, the overall.
Councilmember Vance?
Um, you come back to it?
Sure, Councilmember Stone?
Sure, and I think this is just looking, uh, this was my look at the hundred thousand dollar estimate. Compared to sixteen fifty, the average person paying more is a house. Uh, you know, of course, that doubles at two hundred thousand dollars, so that's what, thirty-three dollars more is. And I think we had said last time that that was, oh, like near sixty. And so I just want to say that it's actually about thirty-three dollars more for a two hundred thousand dollar house. Is that correct?
Off the top of my head, I can't say yes or no, um, but I think you are the first.
Okay, and with that, um, you know, I, I'm gonna just repeat again, just so it's on record. You know, I see that we are, uh, you know, decreasing the, the actual tax rate. We are, uh, valuations have dramatically, in my view, personal view, gone up. Across the city, getting closer to market values, getting closer to market values. Um, and so that's also why people are gonna be paying a little bit more if their property values are being closer. So that three times, um. One possible amendment I'd like to put into this is, uh, somewhere in the ballpark of five to ten thousand dollars of making. Possible, um, uh, grants to artists in the community for mural alley. If, if there's anybody that, I, we're an artist city. And, uh, I'm, I'm thinking that it's a little tiny bit of money, we're already, we're making twelve thousand bucks more. Um, I'm thinking, you know, let's support our artists in being able to come back to that after we've allocated those dollars to then designate that to. a certain committee can be able to figure that out. This is part of this discussion.
That would be.
Uh, this is, oh, we're going to, okay, sorry. This is my first, this is my first radio.
It's just tax rate.
Awesome.
Okay.
Uh, appreciate it, thanks.
Councilmember Martinez. Councilmember Escobedo. Councilmember Nance.
So Megan Nancy, then if all the protests were granted, or were not granted, we have that full taxable values and we'd be getting about forty five thousand over. Correct, for this year. Forty five thousand over, and so you're saying less of that going to INS, more of that going to M and O. Pay off our large debt expenses. Would you say that's a reason to actually, you said in the past, that debt can be good?
Yes. So and the reason why, and and we do have a workshop scheduled in January, the reason why having some debt is good, because we're gonna put ourselves in a position where we're at now, where our INS rate is point zero one, we're we're literally bringing in fifty one thousand four hundred dollars. And we're gonna have a major event come up and our INS is gonna go to point three. And so you're gonna see that huge impact on our community, um, because we're gonna have to maintain our infrastructure, which we're starting to have those concessions. Now, I know that when I started, I I was a avid supporter of do not go out for debt, because we were trying to recover from where we were at. We did not have fund balance, we actually were in in the negative one point two million. We had no reserves, we did not know if we would make payroll or keep the life on the city hall. Going out for debt wasn't beneficial to the city. But over the past ten, twelve years, the city's done an excellent job, yes, we underwent. That's how we've been able to get out of the situation we're in. But now we're in that next situation where we're realizing, okay, we built it up, we're back where we need to be, now we need to look at the debt to be able to go out and fix some of the infrastructure, but we don't want that huge impact on on the residents. And we talk about not raising taxes or making sure we raise them to maintain. And we're gonna have that one day incident where we're gonna go out for that several million dollar bond and it's gonna be a huge impact. So if we start small, identify small projects, go out for that debt, complete the project, pay it off. We'll start being able to, one, gain the trust of the residents, two, complete projects. I know that's something that you've mentioned, Councilor Stone, but three, we're not gonna put a huge impact on our already surrounded.
You're really saying too, the state of Texas, we're basing the tax rate three point five percent, which is the most we can possibly raise the problem of saying, but may I? And that's only bringing in forty five thousand dollars for us, which is absolutely not gonna cover enough, bringing in large capital expenses, anything else. So the state of Texas, because it used to be eight percent or in significant, requires us to go off upon uh, for debt.
Yes, and the big fear is that the state's gonna come back in and say you can't go out for debt, or they're gonna cap our ability to for debt. So they capped our ability to raise taxes um without having voter approval. Which i- is not a horrible thing, but it makes it really hard when you're trying to operate a city and all of the expenses that come with it. We we've talked about that from a residential, commercial, you know, the city is one too. Now, if the state comes in and regulates our debt, we may not be able to complete these projects like we want, because they're gonna cap our ability to go out for debt. And there are different debt options.
I was gonna say, and people and council needs to know what is in the general fund, what is property tax, sales tax actually go, police, parks, whatever.
So it's gonna be your administration, your city council, it's gonna be your building services, which is coded enforcement. It's gonna be your police department, your animal control, your parks, it's gonna be your human resources. Uh, it's gonna be your building maintenance, it's gonna be your street, 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 and it, and it's also gonna be um as of this upcoming year, your economic development. Um, basically, so everything but water and gas. It's everything that is not enterprise. So water, gas, hotel, airport, um, sewer sanitation, those are all, they're they operate separate. This is where Rick and I kind of, he looks at the big picture, I financially look at everything different, because from an auditing, everything is different. Um, it doesn't really go in.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, these are really important things, so if we ever do ask for tax increases, your, all those things you just listed, important stuff.
City Secretary, the uh budget tax rate or the proposed tax rate of point four three nine two zero five passed unanimously. Well, see, first, in favor. All right, moving on to action item D, city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Item D is to approve the first and final reading of ordinance twenty twenty four dash zero nine dash zero six. An ordinance amending the city of Alpine fiscal year twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four budget, providing repealing inseparability clauses, the tax opening that pod and providing effectively.
Again, second. City manager discussion.
So every year we typically have to amend our budget. So what I mean by amend the budget is departments are allowed to amend within their budget. Um, so maybe there are a couple thousand over one line item and they wanna move it from another line item, they can do that throughout the year. Towards the end of the year is when we have the conversation of are we over, are we unders, and we need to take from other departments. Our city charter also establishes that we are required to go before council to amend anything in salaries. Um, specifically, it says if we were to increase, I take it as anything I wanna do salary, I take it before council, and I include overtime. So included in the package is fourteen different amendments. Um, that recognizes either increase or decrease in expenses and revenues. Some of the specific ones that I tried to summarize them. And city council approved the twenty five thousand dollars to Alpine and School District for the daycare. This is just recognizing the revenue from the the insurance fund into the general fund, because this wasn't an originally budgeted item. I just want the added clarification with council. Um, it's to recognize increase overtime and unemployment expenses in the police department, so um as there's a turnover and a switch out, the overtime does increase. This is just allowing the salaries to reduce to cover that additional overtime. Uh, and item number three is to recognize increased expenses, computer and software, and appropriate correct funds for social security, insurance, retirement, unemployment in administration. If you recall, capital approved the civic club plus um as part of what would have been for jail, so we just reduced the administration salaries, put that towards the additional cost for the computers and IT. And then the other ones are just to kind of, um, unfortunately, I misbudgeted our retirement insurance to correct those. Um. The fourth one is to recognize contract labor expenses for building and service departments. Um, we did have a contract uh you building official for that period of time to retire someone. This is just to address that. Um, to recognize the HR insurance salary within the human resource department, we had an individual from I think A and M or A and M um reach out, wanted to return. We don't say no, we may not have had it in the legend, but we definitely wanna encourage people to come in turn. She came in for about two months. And as we said, our HR department have got the product on some of the filing organization, um, provided some great um insight into some of the forms, it was really nice to have her, we hope she comes back full time. Um, but this is just to uh address the the salary. Um, item six is to recognize the contract labor. Um, council did approve the LSL, which this came from to help with the finance department. This is just moving that contract amount from salaries into that contract item. Item seven is to recognize increased expenses within the animal control budget from another department, um, the building maintenance. Um, this is actually increasing the overall department budget by twenty two thousand five hundred eighty seven dollars. So I did have a conversation with Jennifer, once again, we don't wanna discourage, especially when programs are working, the Spain Uter program, um, they took a hold of it and wrapped it this year. We did budget additional funds for next year, so we could continue the program. But unfortunately, she did go over the total bottom line number, so we're pulling uh funds from building maintenance. And specifically, what she should have utilized for a producer building, which she could police out with animals, which she was able to the police department and then some from city hall as well. Item A is to recognize increased expenses within the street department. And this includes contract labor, insurance, and unemployment. So every year, any type of contract out to give additional assistance, this year we did not. Um, but we did have some from the very beginning that we needed to adjust, so that's what this is applying to. Item nine is to recognize increase overtime and unemployment expenses within the water department. Once again, with your short staff, your overtime tends to increase, this was just all the difference. Uh, item ten is to recognize increased salary, overtime, insurance, retirement, unemployment in the water department. Um, we originally did budget for the three employees during the year, they did get their certifications, um. Was not originally budgeted, this is just to uh include that. Um, item ten is to recognize solid waste advisory grant revenue and expense. Um, we don't know year to year what we're gonna get, so we don't typically budget for it, but for audit audit purposes, we do budget and recognize that it's coming. Item number twelve is to recognize the additional routine airport maintenance program revenue in citizens within the airport. So we work off of the fifty fifty with ramp, typically about ten thousand a year up to thirty thousand, depending on what's available. This fiscal year, we found out that it was a ninety ten, so we're recognizing an additional fifty five thousand dollars in local services. Um, item number thirteen is to recognize increased overtime and unemployment within the hot fund. This is kind of the same thing, when you're, you have someone out, uh, your short staff, or person does pick up, um, it is routine, there's no issue there. Um, item fourteen is to recognize increased revenue collected to the interest in. So I just wanna make sure the council does recognize that. We do typically bring in a little bit more because of the liquid taxes, um, so I just wanna recognize that.
Councilmember Nance. Councilmember Stevens. Councilmember Stone.
Couple of quick things, uh, just a couple of quick items. Uh, the trap Uter and release program, they're all volunteers, so these are expenses that are going to veterinarians. Hopefully, maybe they they're trying to talk, you know, obviously getting their de- decrease costs as well, but you know, we're we're supporting our vets here, which I know are are extremely important as well. I have one quick question, this is recognizing the fifty dollar an hour increase across.
No, so this is for this fiscal year that we're about to end, the fifteen dollars was included in the next year.
This is for twenty twenty three.
Twenty four, yes.
Twenty twenty. There am I. Uh, cool, so this would not be the appropriate place to make budget amendments for the next year.
We'll actually have that in October, if you wanna add something to the agenda, then we can address that.
Councilmember Escobedo.
Okay.
Councilmember Martinez. All right, let's vote.
All right.
I.
Right.
City Secretary, city council unanimously approved ordinance twenty twenty four dash oh nine dash oh six. Moving on to action item E, city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Action item E is to approve resolution twenty twenty four dash zero nine dash fifty. A resolution approving a recommendation for parks and recreation facility fees, as recommended by the Parks and Recreation Board.
I need a motion.
I'm gonna vote, you may approve a resolution twenty twenty four oh nine fifteen after that.
I need a second.
Second.
City manager, discussion.
At the last Parks Board meeting, um, it was brought to their attention to review the current fees um that we currently have with the pavilion, with the civic center. Um, we tried out a new thing with the pavilion, we tried to split the rental between the two different time periods, um, we did add the deposit. Uh, we found that that was not beneficial, um, not only to the city, but really to the residents. Um, they didn't want to be bubbled in, um, you know, when you have a party, you wanna have it, you wanna have it. Uh, so the recommendation was to actually remove the two time stretch periods to allow for a a one day pass or one day rental fee. Um, and then, of course, it does continue to include the refundable deposit. Um, the civic center was also updated, um, this has been a back and forth discussion with with Joe and myself and and now the Parks Board with when we have an event and you know, uh, if anyone's been to a continietta or a wedding and they they have it here in the civic center, it takes them a while to set that up. Um, typically, we would allow them a a day before. What we've done is we've included an additional fee. We've changed the the base fee to five hundred and fifty, which automatically includes the Friday and the Saturday. Um, but then we've also included in an added charge of fifty dollars per day. So if I wanted to rent the civic center for a wedding on on Friday or Saturday, but I wanted to start maybe three days ahead of time, then I would have the ability to pay for those days. This is to help cover the costs, obviously, with the air conditioning, electricity, that kind of thing. Um, so we thought that was really important. We also removed the half day, um. It is really not, once again, beneficial, nobody really wants to rent it for half a day, and on top of that, um, it's really hard to to rent it for half a day, have someone coming in clean, if someone else tries to rent it, so if someone tried, kind of, he's gonna do it. Uh, so they went ahead and removed it. So those are the two big um changes, and then, of course, we did include all the supporting information, including uh that.
Councilmember Stone.
Uh, these are, you know, these something competitive prices. I know that there's an open air pavilion in Fort Davis, that they'll rent for sometimes two fifty, even if you're a tri-county resident, but just noting that we are gonna be more expensive than other places, but some of our places are indoor, you know, things like that. Quick question, uh, Coconut Park Pavilion, do these parties allow alcohol?
No, there are no alcohol alcoholic beverages in university.
Yeah, um, that's what I thought. Uh, and question maybe for the police officer, if a beverage like this was covered with a koozie, do we know if it has alcohol in it or not? Because I know people sometimes at pavilion do have alcohol, so I'm just trying to get to the bottom of it.
It it has to be really blatant.
Yeah, the red cup clause, as Texas says, like, you can cover your alcoholic beverage, and if obviously you're not blatantly drunk or someone, or if you're intoxicated, there's code for that.
Yeah, especially with the the way the cans are made now, or or uh a dr- uh, energy drinks.
Yeah.
You can't tell sometimes that they're uh energy or alcoholic.
Yeah.
And if they are, it's gonna be more like a PI.
Yeah, sure, yeah, and if they are drunk, yeah, intoxicated or something like that. We might wanna revisit that again, I know there was a poll put out at one point last year. I don't know, I think that they can tell if somebody's drunk or if there's something going on crazy, and people are doing it anyway, so again, don't criminalize things that hopefully should just be about, but it's okay.
Councilmember Stevens. Councilmember Martinez.
Okay.
Councilmember Escobedo. Councilmember Nance.
The only thing I was gonna say is these recommendations came from city leadership, Joe and Megan, and I believe that's that's great, because they hear about the problems, not the Parks Board, they're not calling us and saying, you know, that's just not working for me, so you guys hear all the problems and all, create a thought that's in actual practice, which is very very practical. That thing I was gonna say was, the school district recently uh uh rented the pavilion and had mentioned that if we could come up with an easier process, more efficient process, so just saying that, we're about to go to T M L, I'll be really interested to see whatever options are available.
Question? Let me have one little question. I I have a run with sort of the civic center for May, June.
It doesn't change anything, all the interns.
City Secretary, resolution twenty twenty four dash oh nine dash one five passed unanimously. Moving on to action item C, city secretary.
Thank you, Mayor. Item F is approved order twenty twenty four dash oh nine dash oh one, in order approving an election services contract with Richard County for the joint November fifth, twenty twenty four special.
I need a motion.
Make a motion to approve order twenty twenty four oh nine oh one.
I need a second. Second. Discussion, city secretary.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so essentially, since we are conducting a November election, we are required by law to hold that one to the county. This is just the contract that goes along with that, the link, a what uh responsibility we have at the city, or what responsibility today have. Uh, the particular interest, particularly interesting for me, because it's gonna be the first time I've ever participated in the election and not been very grown clear, running every single part of it. Uh, I have been involved, uh, you know, still obviously significantly, but it's just a kind of a new experience for us, but I reviewed everything, I reviewed multiple contracts, I drafted this, I sent it to the county, they don't have any more revisions, so let me know if you have a question.
Okay, councilmember Stevens.
So two items, one, one more, the cost is gonna be after you. So it's half the question, okay, yeah. The second item, in reading all of the ballot proposals, I was confused in reading them because there's not quotes about where we're adding something, so example, proposition A, it's a show art to other city session. You meant to add, I would have thought there'd been a quote about the language that's gonna go in, because I got all the review in this question.
I have been on the city website, uh, on this particular exhibit, only in the. I have been on the city website. Uh, on this particular exhibit, it's only in the town. So that's typically how you'll see them here on the charter.
That's the ballot language. That's why I'm having our own. The whole language to make it confusing.
Un- unfortunately, the ballots have already been frictioned. I uh I made that on the order the council approved with about.
Councilmember Escobedo? Councilmember Nance?
Um, page one four eight, yeah. That um that chart there with the polling locations?
Yes.
That's similar what we happen to lead with the lengths. We're very specific. See where those words are.
Yes.
I I that's a good control, cause I wasn't sure how complex that was.
It's not too bad. Like I said, we touched every ballot for every ward, so each ward you see there in the precinct, we have a ballot set up. And some of them are really not too different than with like twenty-five ballots. In that ward, that precinct. Uh, others are a lot. She ordered, I'm sure, based on the of the fund.
And the only other question I have was reading through all these unofficial propositions. They are all different. It's like what so we cast?
They're all, yes, sir.
Yes, and all of them, we would want the answer to see.
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez? Councilmember Stone?
Slightly germy. It's gonna be good practice for hopefully the future and uh that I'm gonna be having conversations with the ISD.
Secretary, order twenty twenty-four dash oh nine dash oh one was approved unanimously. Moving on to action item G, city manager.
City Mayor, action item is to approve the city's all-time ballot for the Texas Police K M L Region Board Director Election.
I need a motion.
Make a motion to approve the city about my ballot that Texas penis would be region for director election.
I need a second. Discussion, city manager.
Um, we typically don't present these before council, um because we don't really get a lot of action on three to four. Um, but it is up for ballot and there is more than being covered. So um currently on the ballot is John L. Davis, the mayor of Valmeri, and then Jack Lad, who's the council member added to the list. So we're asking that council make a recommendation so that we can pass on the official ballot. We'll fill it up and give it to you. It's one ballot. Um, you would just basically amend the motion and select who you would like to put.
This motion has to be amended.
Yes, cause I did not have the recommendation for council to select someone. Um, I think that both candidates could be beneficial to our region. Um, I do personally know Jack Lad. I have interacted with him at multiple T M L meetings. Um, I I would comment. I do believe that uh Councilor Ness has uh worked with John Davis with the small communities.
Considering that.
Uh, the advisory council, which, you know, is an important role as well. Um, I do know that they did provide their biographies um in the package as well.
Councilmember Ness?
I'll make an amendment that we choose Jack Lad.
I need a second. Any discussion on the amendment?
Uh, do you mind giving your piece of?
No, um, sorry, John L. Davis, he's actually the chairperson of the small city about the council. Um, so I've known very briefly about that. Uh, it's gonna go into multiple T M L events. But that's it. Those those all the events, it seems like those larger cities have a lot of resources and closer talent to um community. Even when you look at T M L, there's regional board director. And if it's a small city, it's rather difficult. That small city, it's rather difficult. It's more specified, could really be a small city. And regional ones are typically.
Do you see that the having a smaller town person and people person would give us a better better deal over now?
Um, and I like having John Davis on the small city. I know Jack Lad, uh, it's been supplied.
Give any recommendations, Megan?
So I I would recommend Jack Lad from a regional perspective because their focus on the nation as a whole. Really does have um, I personally don't know John Davis, but I do know that he stands on that small city advisory. And I think if you could say on that, that's the bigger after.
Gio?
Uh, I do not know uh the other person, but I did know Jack Lad.
I don't know your name, but I I'm listening to your eyes and say, do you think that he would be a your first of the application?
Alright, let's vote on the amendment to have Jack Lad as our our selection. Alright.
Alright.
City Secretary, the amendment passed unanimously. Now let's vote on the original motion as amended. Alright.
Alright.
City Secretary, the original motion as amended has passed unanimously. Moving on to executive reports. Okay, city mayor report, there is none. City manager, six minutes on the clock.
Oh, no, I feel like I should say none right now, but I think you know. Okay, um continuing with the the traditional items that are on my list, the water infrastructure. As mentioned at the last meeting at the beginning of September, our primary focus has been switched to the letting copper inventory deadline about October sixteen. We have scheduled weekly uh meetings to give status updates on where we're at with that information. Um, our engineers are working on helping us prepare that document to submit to uh T C Q on time. We do have a scheduled workshop first October fifteenth, two twenty twenty-four at four P M to discuss the ongoing projects, concerns, and suggestions. Our engineers have put together a presentation that will be presented that will address some of the things that we've been talking about in the direction we can go. On the wastewater infrastructure, we did receive the contract. We are pending a response from the legal team regarding the signing and the dates. The contractor dated before the approval needed to verify, so we need to see if we can change it. So they dated the bond one date and the contract another. We're just gonna make sure from a legal perspective, we're not in any trouble. From the street infrastructure, we did receive the hot box. Um, they have been utilizing it and have been trained or getting training. We are still on our steel coating project, and we do have a street workshop scheduled for October first, twenty twenty-four at four P M. On the employee compensation side, they've already started on working on updating job description. Um, Evergreen did request the employee information to be updated to include the new hires, terminations, promotion dates, and salaries. Uh, annual differential pay listed verifying the hire dates. This is currently pending completion by the city. We went in again, one by one, for each of the employees that we currently have and updated everything. From when we originally started this to to now, we've had some promotions, some differential pay, so we need to make sure. Um, the comprehensive plan. I do recommend that council set priorities and tasks for the planning and zoning to work towards and support the comprehensive plan. Currently, the planning and zoning committee is looking at uh the zoning map, changing zoning ordinances. I think it would be best if we schedule something as a group to discuss um the direction we wanna go so that we're not wasting time and resources. I feel like they may be on one path and your path may be different, and at the end, it will not benefit the city. Because we do have a comprehensive plan and workshop scheduled for November fifth, they will be invited. Um, just understand what a comprehensive plan is. But I really do think it's important that the city council do look at what direction you'd like them to take. Um, so that one, they have the guidance, and two, that it's not contradicting or additional work outside of the direction you guys want to go.
Okay, great. Thank you. Alright, any discussion on the items that she's mentioned? Councilmember Stone?
Mayor, uh, when are we gonna see the employee compensation plan?
So they haven't sent me an updated schedule, but they are currently pending our response to all of the the changes in the salaries.
Maybe next week?
No.
Yeah. Uh, and then one question on street infrastructure. Are they working on multiple projects at the same time?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez? Councilmember Nance?
So one thing interesting, you just mentioned, we'll see the compensation plan in October.
I hope.
And so when will that actually, cause we were talking about that getting made in the second fiscal year. At what point in that making this little review season?
So once the council has the recommendations and review and we have a game plan, like how do we wanna implement it? Because they'll provide different um options. As soon as council approves whatever recommendation, it will be implemented the next.
Councilmember Escobedo? Councilmember Stevens?
So just a a little slow. Over these streets you want to have. We see expectation.
The compensation plan or the comprehensive?
Um, compensation.
So they're pending our updates to all of the salaries, and we've added some different things and we've updated dates for promotion. So I'm hoping that I'll have a tentative, either draft or at least um something to present to council the next.
So maybe October, probably more real.
Just come back on that compensation plan. We okayed a budget. How much flexibility was built in the compensation plan on that competition?
Yes, and so you have to take into consideration that not everyone is going to get A rates. So the record, and this is what's gonna be the hard part, and I and I understand that these are hard to do. But they're coming back in, and that's why I like the modify. We're looking at the tenure, they're looking at the promotion and growth climate or growth rate as well. Um, not everyone will get recommended. So obviously, the lower end ones are gonna move up. Um, they're also looking at the market uh comparison. Some of them, like law enforcement, will have an impact. Um, but some of the departments won't.
I just wanted to make sure you go without flexibility of budget, that whatever you choose, you're gonna be okay.
I should be, yes. Unless it, as I said, the data we're preparing right now is really going to determine what these increases are. Because it's looking at the combination of the higher tenure, promotion, salary differential. So we wanted to make sure it was as accurate as possible. So anyone who's gotten a raise from when we initiated this several months ago, we wanted to figure that out. So it's literally one by one. We don't have the ability to print a report. They can't do that, so it's going to be in nature.
So we're listening. Should we be thinking about setting the size?
So they'll actually be doing a presentation once I am, once they get the pieces they're missing from us right now. Um, we'll have a better understanding of what's needed and with the recommendations. So ideally, I was hoping this second week in November, um tentatively, because we do have to schedule. If not, if you have urgency.
So we are partially implementing the ten. Probably have a special.
I would like to tell you guys to plan a workshop for every uh, it's the best time to schedule them because ideally, I understand that everyone does have jobs, but ideally, it's the one day that you do need to hear that thing. So tying them together makes it easier scheduling. Um, trying to schedule them outside of their regular lead does look harder, um because you guys who have all other items.
Can you repeat all of our, I mean, uh, information or or
streets?
Workhorse needs.
Streets are our door. Our fifty. That was actually planned with everybody tentatively going on session.
So every meeting going where we have uh four o'clock.
January seventh, final.
Yes, send us reminders. I'm getting old.
Or excuse me.
Yes. Right, good. Thank you, Megan. Alright, moving on to council member comments. Councilmember Stevens? So at this time, this ring says to item thirteen, executive session. We're going to chapter five five one of the Texas government code, city council, there's the right time, which is during this meeting for any post-aging, the item for to receive advice as permitted by law. Tonight, the city council will recess into executive session pursuant to section five five one point oh seven one, Texas Government Code. To discuss customs and border patrol, border protection, fear release renewal. Discuss status update on property and legal procedures. Discuss the possible sale and acquisition of property for long-term overall city goals and planning, including city-owned structures. I need a motion to move into executive. I need a second. Discussion. Let's vote. Alright. Okay, I have a motion to reconvene into open session.
I have a motion to reconvene to open session.
I need a second. Okay, any discussion? Let's vote on reconvening into open session. Aye. City Secretary, we have voted unanimously to reconvene into open session at 8:41 T M. So this brings us to item number 14, action after executive session. May I please get a motion?
Say, I propose that the City Council authorize the City Manager. Make an offer to purchase. Property owned by Bill Ivy that was destroyed by fire on May 27th. That offer will be dependent upon the fair market value.
I need a second.
Might ask that we repeat that really loudly into the mic because I know it's sometimes quiet there. I just want to make sure it's heard.
Same before the mic.
There it is.
It'll be back to 26.
I, I, May 26th. I, I move that the City Council authorize the City Manager to make an offer. To purchase the property owned by Bill Ivy that was destroyed by fire on May 26th. And that that offer be dependent upon the fair market value.
I need a second. I see. Any discussion? All right, let's vote.
Aye.
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 City Secretary, the motion after executive session has passed unanimously to make an offer. Or allowing the City Manager to make an offer based on fair market value for the property destroyed by fire on May 26th. Okay, and with that, we will adjourn.